Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting. Today is December 4th, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on the nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, as we're going into the holiday season, let's have a nice moment of silence wishing for everyone's safety and mostly for the safety of our first responders who serve this community every day. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It fell a couple of times, I guess. Okay, so we have a few people under public comment who have requested to speak tonight. We have Brian Cicarello from the Commissioner of Rockingham County. He is the Commissioner that serves on Londonderry, and he had asked for a few minutes on our agenda tonight. So, Brian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you giving me this time to speak about Rockingham County. Should I move this? Yeah, that sounds a little bit better. The last time I was here was two years ago, I believe, and I had just gotten elected as one of the Commissioners. So, very proud to represent Londonderry as one of the towns that I represent, and I just wanted to give you all a slight reading of what's going on at the county.
Terrific, thank you.
And I'm actually happy to see quite a full room here. My other political hat I wear is a town councilor in Derry, and I don't usually get this many people, but that's always good.
Happy to send them over, Brian.
It's always good. That's okay.
I mean, I'm sure they would love to participate.
So, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, I got elected in 2020 for Rockingham County, and I just want to share some of the fabulous work that we're doing over there. The budget over at the county is $95,887,350. Just to give you a little bit of perspective there is the town of Derry's school is over a $102 million budget, and my budget's for 37 communities. As many people know, we oversee the nursing home, long-term care, we have assisted living, we have the county correctional jail, we have the Sheriff's Department, Registry of Deeds, County Attorney's Office. What I wanted to share with you is when the amount of taxation that we actually tax the people in the 37 communities in 2019 was $50,297,336. The next year, in 2020, was $49 million, so we actually did a tax cut, $457,963. The next year is $49,791,743. 2023 was $49,791,743. And this year, FY budget for '24 is $50,370. So, over a four-year period, we're basically flat, flat spending, okay? At the same time, we all know that inflation was 16% over that same period, so that's just going to show you how well we hold the line at the county. One of the things that we did get when I first got elected was rental assistance. This was during COVID. The federal government gave us money to keep people in their apartments. They were paying the landlords directly on behalf of the tenants, which was great. So, I just wanted to share that in Londonderry, we brought $721,913 to the people of Londonderry that helped 88 people, which was about an average of $8,204. So, that was a big plus. My nursing home, long-term care facility, is a five-star rating. When I came in, it was two-star, and this is Medicare.gov that rates. Five-star is the highest. We are a five-star rating and deficiency-free for the last two years. That is unheard of. So, things really picked up well there. Also, we received some ARPA money for the county. All counties across the United States receive money. We received $60.2 million. A lot of that money is being used. We've got a new building going up at the county that's going to house the County Attorney's Office, Registry of Deeds, and the Sheriff's Office in this new building. Right now, they're in the basement at the county courthouse, which has got major issues. So, what we did is we're using roughly about $38 million of that ARPA money, and then the delegation, and I know there's a couple of delegation members here as well, this was two years ago, decided to bond $25 million for this building. We had two old bonds that retired, so it was pretty much an offset, and the timing was great because it's low interest. Also, we've got, going in behind this new building, we've got 8,800 solar panels, which will be the largest in the state of New Hampshire, and will pay for the whole county complex, the electricity. For the next 30 years, we'll have zero electricity bill. What does that mean? $600,000 a year in electricity will be wiped out, and we'll generate another $150,000 in recs that we'll sell off. So, that's using federal dollars for the solar panels, but the ROI, return of investment, is $22,500,000 over a 30-year period that will benefit the taxpayers. Sheriff's Department, we have two new police dogs. We're very active in working with our federal partners with the drugs that we hear, fentanyl and whatnot, so Sheriff Maseos is doing a fantastic job there. And we're also bringing in a new 90-day STAR program, so not only are we fighting drugs, we're actually helping people get off these drugs. We have, this is a new program, a 90-day program. We also have a program in-house in the jail. There's only two jails that have programs inside the jail for...
Can you hold for one second, Brian?
Absolutely.
Drew, I'm getting texts from people who are watching the broadcast who are saying the sound is having a problem and that the sound is scratchy.
Okay, hopefully people heard me, but I'm pretty much done here. I also have an assisted living spot that when COVID was there, we didn't bring anybody in, but right now, coming out of COVID, the county's doing really, really well. We lost one senior to COVID, which was great because before I came in, they ordered 200 body bags expecting the worst. And as everyone remembered when COVID was brand-new and we were watching the TV with Italy and a lot of seniors losing their lives, we were all nervous. But we came out of it well, and we came out stronger. So, I want to thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak. If anyone has any questions briefly, I know you've got a packed house and you want to get to some other important things, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I will say one other thing. I'm running for reelection next year, but unfortunately, I lose Londonderry, which I'm going to tell you right now, Londonderry's been really, really great to me. I appreciate everybody's, you know, participation. When they have something that they need, they call me, so... But I pick up Salem, which I grew up in Salem, so that'll be good. But you're stuck with me for one more year.
Any questions for the Commissioner?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, of course.
So, my understanding, and I'm trying to get this correct, is that there was a program called Felonies First where the county handled felony cases for the towns, and that that is going away and that burden is going back to the towns. Yes?
I'm not exactly 100%. I know they're changing some of the program, which will, and I don't know if it's going to affect, how it's going to affect the towns, per se. What I can tell you is my jail population's going to increase. It's going to cost more to operate the things that we need to operate with, so I'm not exactly sure how it will affect the towns, per se, but I can find out and get back to you.
Well, what it seems to be, the immediate effect seems to be that it's adding cases that our prosecutor has to handle that she wasn't having to handle before. It's upping her workload, which is why we're talking about possibly adding another one. So, my question is basically if this was something that the county, a service that the county was providing that the county's not providing anymore, is there the possibility of getting funding from the county to help with dealing with prosecuting those felonies at the local level?
Yeah, I'd have to do some more deep dive research on that. I know that there's some new laws that are being talked about at the state as well. What I can tell you right now is what I'm dealing with in the jails is a lot of mental health issues, and we have our own issues where if they're sent to hospitals, we actually have to send someone to sit there and watch. So, it is costing the county more money. I just don't know how it affects the individual towns. I'd have to ask Pat Conway, who is our county attorney, how that will work. I know she's on top of those issues, so...
Mr. Chairman, so just to kind of answer the question, I used to be a prosecutor, so I'm able to answer the question because Felonies First started just before I took over as LPD Police Prosecutor, and it is now, as you noted, ending. And it doesn't affect where the, it affects where the cases start, where the felony cases start for prosecution. So, there will be, right now, when somebody is arrested and held overnight, they're arraigned in Superior Court. They're going to be held and arraigned in District Court. There is an entitlement to a probable cause hearing, which is a showing that, yeah, there was a basis for the detention and there's a basis for the charges. That is going to take place in the District Court, but then it does need to go to county for final adjudication. And so, they will still, we're just going to touch those cases in a way that we haven't been touching them, but the county is still going to continue to do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you. Anybody else have a question at all I can answer?
Anyone else for the Commissioner?
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is public comment. If you have any questions for the Commissioner.
And if you have a question later on, I'm on Facebook. Rockingham County has its own Facebook page. You can jump on there, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, and thank you again.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
So, I understand the Fire Chief wants to update us on some things.
Good evening, leadership. Just coming before you tonight to give you a quick command update with the Fire Department and what's going on. I got five quick hits of information. The first is the paramedic update. So, as you're well aware, paramedics in the job market just don't exist, and that's a problem for us because we have a commitment to the community to provide ALS life support to our citizens. So, what we did is we looked internally, which nine times out of 10, you can find the solutions to those problems when you look within your team and your people, and as such, I'm happy to report that we have had two members of Londonderry Fire recently graduate paramedic school. The first is Pete Sensibella. He became a licensed paramedic last month, and what's unique about Pete is he's also a reservist, and the United States Army paid for his paramedic training in full, a huge benefit to the community. The second graduate from medic school was Val Shabina. Val's training was 16 months long to become a paramedic. She did this while balancing two kids at home, a husband, on top of shift work, and it just, it speaks to the caliber of employees that we have at Londonderry Fire. So, Val and Pete are both going to add to the ALS coverage in town. With that, we have two additional firefighters, Christopher Schofield, who's the Union President for 3160, and Liam Jerome, another firefighter currently doing their clinical ride time. So, every paramedic student has an educational institute that requires a certain number of ride time in the field, and these two members are going through their training right now. All things go well, they'll graduate on January 9th, and that will bring our firefighter paramedic coverage from 10 to 12, with a total, including lieutenants and the battalion chiefs and the assistant chief, up to 24 paramedics with Londonderry Fire. So, we are faced with that challenge, and we're actively working to change it. The second update is a training building. So, as you're well aware, we are a very young department in terms of experience, and the way that we fill that experience gap is through training. So, with the training budget, we just purchased three Conax or shipping containers that are going to be assembled behind Central Station. The members are going to fabricate them to kind of build a training ground for our people that we can train right behind headquarters. A huge shout-out to the DPW and those guys because they came and did all the site work to prepare for these shipping containers to arrive, which costs us nothing. So, huge team effort here. Number three is the COVID money reimbursement from FEMA. So, relationships are everything. I have a relationship with the New Hampshire Homeland Security Director. Right now, the Londonderry Fire Department with the Finance Director's leadership is working to secure 600, roughly $600,000 of COVID relief monies, and it's been a challenge because, as you know, the federal government changes rules halfway through the game. So, the rules we were following back in 2020, 2021 have changed, and now we have to adapt. So, we called in the Homeland Security Director. He outlined a path for us to take in order to try to secure these monies for the town. Of that 600,000, there's roughly 70,000 eligible for like durable goods, PPE, MAFS, this type of thing. The other part we're really working hard at is the $532,000 of labor costs, of the added overtime during the pandemic that Chief Darren O'Brien did for the community. So, we actually have the Director's Field Team coming to Londonderry Fire this week to sit down with Battalion Chief Bruce Halliwell to go through all the call logs in Fire Alarm to try to pinpoint and find any notes in the system that we can tie to COVID. If we can do that, we have a better case with the federal government to get those monies reimbursed to the team, so I'll be sure to update you further with that. The fourth one, the new fire engine. The morale right now in the department is sky-high, and that is because we have the best firefighters in the state, and this community understands that and wants to give the firefighters the best equipment available to do their job. So, Mr. Chairman, right now, your Fire Department is the talk of the state. People want to know how we're doing this, and the answer is very simple: solid leadership and support from the community. So, we just wanted to recognize and thank you, the leadership in the community, for doing this for our fire engines. You don't know what you've done for our people. And the last one is promotion. So, since my last command update, we have since promoted a Battalion Chief, John Camery, and a Lieutenant Riley Northrup. And this past Friday, we promoted Deputy Chief Fred Heinrich to a newly created position with the organization called Assistant Fire Chief. This position has not existed before, and working collaboratively with the town manager, the Union President and leadership, we were able to negotiate this into the contract, and Fred, Deputy Chief, is now the Assistant Chief. And this is very important because Fred has 35 years of experience, and I often think that sometimes your greatest strength can also be your greatest weakness. For me, I execute. I have no problem executing, but that can jam me up to it sometimes. Fred has a unique ability with 35 years of experience to rein me in when I need to be reined in, but most importantly, tell me no when I need to be told no, which is very important. We have that relationship through trust, so therefore Fred can influence me, and I can influence Fred, and it's been an awesome, it's been an awesome process. Mr. TM, thank you very much for the support. It's really making a difference over at Londonderry Fire. That's all I have for you guys for my command update. I'd be happy to ask or answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the Chief? Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to pause the meeting for a minute. Drew, if you can hear me, I'm getting feedback that the, and I guess everyone's getting feedback at home, that they can't hear the meeting. Do we need to shut down and restart? I mean, how do we help? And if you need to come out of the room, let me know.
Drew, just a quick, yeah, real quick.
Go to YouTube?
So, it's that, so if they can live... So, if they livestream at...
All right, so they say, so something's going on in the background, and we can't diagnose that problem. If you're having a problem hearing the meeting, go to the YouTube access. @londondarynh-governmentaccess, and you'll be able to hear the meeting. Apologize for any problems that we're having, but that's the only resolution we have for right now. Thank you.
If they can't hear us, would it be possible to put up a little blurb on the screen so they can read it? Because if they're getting, we just verbally said it, and they can't.
Kirsten, where are you? Can you put that on Facebook, please? Put that on Facebook and put it on the website.
I don't know if Drew can put something on the...
I don't know if he can or not. I think he's having, you know, he's got his hands full at the moment. So, apologize for that, ladies and gentlemen.
Drew just said he'll do it.
He's going to put something up on the screen as well, also to those places. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're in public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the council and speak this evening?
Can we, sir? Oh, sorry.
Cameron? Can you put a microphone on, put the microphone on the podium or move the podium closer or something so that we can put a microphone on it? Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. It would be better if, I guess, if you could hear me. Jim Green, 22 Sugarplum Lane in Londonderry. I'm here tonight to support the library and their budget request, primarily as a senior citizen. I think we're all familiar with the work they do with respect to the children and teens and tweens and keeping people in healthy and productive time outside of school, as well as the evening programs and the rest of that. But as a senior citizen, there are programs that they do that make an awful lot of difference to us. And I'm the, one of the Board of Directors at the Sugarplum Condo Association. One of the major functions we have at our community that keeps us together is the book club. They meet every month. The library has been tremendously supportive. For people that are starting to have hearing problems and visual problems, audiobooks are a lifeline to keep you involved. And now with, we have a senior community that's somewhat fabricated. There's a growing population of people who are computer literate and are happy to use computer resources to get their information and keep up to date with what's going on. There's also that group that isn't, and we're, I'm the Chair of the Senior Resource Committee. We're looking at ways how to get in contact and keep the people who are not computer literate involved. But with the proposal, as I understand it, it's going to improve and expand digital access. That's going to be key to seniors staying up in a world that's changing so rapidly. If you think about just AI right now and what that means, and I was hearing last night about the new, oh, shoot, quantum computer that will change everything. It takes what you did in your old computer, and it does work in a second that stuff took years before. So, I'm just asking that we try and keep the library involved. It's an important part of our community, and we'd like to see it stay that way, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Yes, Aaron.
Good evening, Town Council and Budget Committee members. I'm Erin Matlin, the Library Director. I'm here to continue to advocate for the library. I'm asking that you make no changes to the FY25 library budget. It was suggested at the last meeting that adding G-Milks was more of a want than a need. I would have to disagree. In my opinion, for Londonderry, this is an absolute need. Part of my job is to advocate for services that would help to improve the personal, educational, and recreational needs of this community. This service would absolutely do that. I have been working in libraries for over 30 years. Every library I have worked at has been part of a consortium, and I was able to see every day how having this service was a benefit to our patrons and our staff. Working, connecting, and sharing with libraries is what our patrons should expect, and by doing that, only improves every library that is connected by that consortium. Don't you want that for Londonderry? Are you comfortable having our patrons going to G-Milks, going to a G-Milks library and paying a membership fee to get the services that we could easily and should provide to them here? I shared this map, and I have it here, if you don't remember, from the November 4th Budget Committee, Budget Presentation, and the reason I'm sharing it again is because I think that it shows very clearly that Londonderry is literally surrounded by towns, all in G-Milks, and here we sit on an island, not sharing as much, not collaborating as much, and not providing as much to our community as those libraries provide to theirs. In my professional opinion, I think this is embarrassing. A Budget Committee member also had a concern of cost. By having this service available to the residents of Londonderry, it would only increase the current tax rate by, and Justin, you can correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, 0.007th of a cent. Considering you cannot get anything for less than a penny nowadays, I think this is a great bargain. For the over, for the over 64,000 patrons who came into the library to use our services so far this year, for those that are homebound that use our services, for those that are visiting from out of state to use our services, for any library supporter, I advocate for them. I have no doubt that this service will be welcomed and used greatly by our library patrons. I hope that you will see this need and support the library budget. Now, my Assistant Director, Donna, will now mention more of the benefits that our patrons will see.
Thank you. I'm Donna Plant, Assistant Director at the library. I wanted to add a couple of benefits that we didn't speak to at our initial budget presentation on G-Milks, but before I do that, I also wanted to respond to a question that came up at the November 20th meeting pertaining to the interlibrary loan system. I think the question was along the lines of, why should we add G-Milks when the library already has access to interlibrary loan at the state level, through the state library? My answer to that would be kind of twofold. First, in part, due to the wait time for the user. With the state system, we communicate to patrons that the wait time is anywhere from one to four weeks to receive an item that they've requested. With G-Milks, any item that is held by G-Milks that's currently available and on the shelf, we could receive at the library in as little as one to three days. Not only that, but the patron also has the option of same day going to that library, using their card to check it out. When we communicate to patrons that their request may take one to four weeks, we do have a fair amount of people that decline to place a request because they can't wait that long. They actually choose to go and buy it themselves instead. For our patrons, time is money for them as well, so, I mean, that's a huge benefit, just that convenience factor. And a one-to-four-week wait is not meeting community needs when the community knows we can provide better. We're surrounded by communities that are providing better. The second part of that is staff time. Our system and the state system, our system is not capable of establishing a connection with the state system. So, everything we process, we process separately and manually in each system. The huge technology upgrade that would come with G-Milks, that system is capable of establishing that connection with the state system. So, something like an item in real time at the state system would be able, we'd be able to see whether it's in or out. Right now, you can't tell that information. And what happens because of that is that a request coming in to us from another library, we still have to look at even though the item is not on the shelf. We have to look it up in our catalog, figure out, okay, we can't send it, set the status to can't send it. With the new system, that request wouldn't even come to us. It would automatically go to the next lender. So, little things like that are going to save so much staff time.
I'm going to interrupt you for just a second. Let the record reflect that I've lifted the five-minute limit. Please proceed.
Thank you. Just to give a better idea of staff time for lending, right now with our system, I estimate it takes about seven minutes per item. Borrowing takes approximately 12 minutes per item, and based on this year's usage, that adds up to about over 670 hours of staff time. With G-Milks, I estimate being able to save at least 25% of that, where G-Milks, I estimate, we could process materials in about three minutes or less. Last year, we spoke to a need of more staff time, specifically 3,300 hours we brought to the Board of Trustees, and as you know, the Warren article that we brought to request a full-time staff member failed, but the need for that staff did not go away just because the Warren article failed. but the need for that staff did not go away just because the Warren article failed. The message that we received through that process in the budget season last year is that the community wants us to manage at our current staffing level. But that comes with a cost, and some of that looks like, things like a backlog in our technical services department right now, which, if, if you've seen some of the commentary at the recent Board of Trustees meetings, you'll notice that patrons are starting to notice that it's taking a long time for books to get to the shelf, especially donations. The reason for that being that we are prioritizing everything that's taxpayer-funded first, before donations. The Board of Trustees this year set summer hours, which cut seven hour, service hours per week between late June and early September. We are currently outsourcing more processing tasks than ever and that comes with a cost of about $3,000 to $4,000 a year. And by processing, I mean that things come in with covers already or spine labels or that sort of thing to limit how much staff time we're putting into processing. We're covering fewer paperback books and eventually this is going to lead toward a shorter lifespan for those materials. But it's something that we felt was necessary with the staff time in mind. We're turning down programming requests. We're changing displays over less or we're putting less resources into those displays. Staff are doing projects that they normally wouldn't, we normally wouldn't want them to do at the desks because it could impact customer service and take them away from the desk when someone needs them, that sort of thing. But it has to happen. And in January, we're planning to move our newsletters to entirely digital only. The reason for that is because when we also print it, there's a lot of time spent on formatting it, which we can avoid if we go digital. So those are just some of the ways that we've tried to manage. While what came up at the last meeting, G-Milks does have a staff time commitment, the savings from all of the manual processes that staff won't have to do anymore if we add G-Milks will far outweigh those requirements that G-Milks has for us to attend meetings. And that staff time will also help us provide more for less. Also, on November 20th, there was a comment speaking to the concern about taxpayers struggling to make ends meet right now, which I think we're all very aware of. And I think that's why we need G-Milks membership, or actually, that it couldn't come at a better time, because of its return on investment. So the tax impact, as Erin mentioned, isn't really going to put a lot of savings back in the taxpayer's wallet. The real savings comes from a situation such as a college student being able to access their textbook for free because they can take their library card, their Leech Library Card, and directly access materials at an academic library through G-Milks. It comes from a parent whose child needs a book for a book report due tomorrow and our copy of the book is already checked out. They have the option, if another G-Milks library owns it, of going directly to that library and checking it out instead of going to the bookstore and buying it. That's real savings back in their wallet. Final example, a family that will have more on-demand access to thousands of DVDs because they would like to have movie night and they don't have to rent or subscribe to a streaming service with their access at the library. We mentioned during our initial presentation that this year's community survey showed overwhelming support for joining G-Milks, something we didn't bring up as a community, also expressed interest in the library adding more hours, specifically Sunday hours. There are currently three G-Milks libraries that offer Sunday hours. One of them is our direct neighbor in Wyndham. There's also one G-Milks library that stays open until 9:00 PM three nights a week, which is outside of our current hours. They're our neighbor in Hudson. So that cost helps us offer that service without the cost of having to add staff ourselves, the electricity for Sundays, we'd have to consider time and a half pay, all of those things. And patrons instead could elect to even send Leech Library materials to those libraries to pick up on a Sunday with G-Milks. Also during budget presentations, the fire department shared the value of mutual aid in their work. They shared that they're stretched thin when multiple calls come in and are often relying on mutual aid. G-Milks is mutual aid for the library. If you consider any scenario where the library service may, may be interrupted, some things that have unfortunately happened in the past, weather and natural disasters, electricity outages, pipe bursts, when those things, not if, but unfortunately, when those things happen, G-Milks, that support system will already be in place for assistance from our neighbors. So in the heat of the moment, we can tell our patrons that they can take their card to the neighboring library. In some cases, we may be able to arrange to send some of our materials to those libraries to have on the shelf. But in order to receive that kind of backup, we have to make the same investment and commitment to them through the G-Milks membership fee. I'm confident that joining G-Milks will likely be the largest cost-savings opportunity that I will see in my career. And I honestly hope to have a couple more decades left in me. So that, I mean, means something. I believe that losing the opportunity at this point would be a devastating loss to residents that I know value not only the community we've built within town lines, but also the larger community we've built with our neighboring towns. So that is it for me. Thank you for your time.
So ladies, public comment is really designed to be five minutes.
Sorry.
So we've gone, we've gone 13.
Sorry.
This is really, really should be an agenda item going out into the future. I didn't know you were coming. I would suggest in the future, if you want to do a presentation to the town council, that you put it on the agenda and we do it as an agenda item.
Yes.
I, oh, people are waiting, so I only have a couple of minutes more to give you, so we need to wrap things up, please.
Okay, we're all done. All set?
All set?
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi.
Yes, hi.
So I am technically from the library and the head of circulation services. However, I'm speaking here today as a Londonderry taxpayer and a library patron. I'm Megan Donovan, 45 Chase Road in Londonderry. So I am a fourth-generation resident. I've lived in Londonderry my entire life. I have been a patron of the library for that same entire life. I've had a library card since I was six years old and I have taken advantage of the fact that the library is available. So before I'm a member of the staff, I am a library patron. So I know people talk about, like, different things, I know Donna mentioned, having the need there. Personally, growing up with a single parent, the library was very, very influential in my life. I attended programs and had services. More recently, when my grandparents were sick, my grandfather had dementia and my grandmother had cancer. And for those times, there was invaluable service that I was able to get from the library to make connections, to help with finding something that my grandmother could eat, to find a book that my grandfather could connect with. So these are things that I personally have had impacted by having the library. Having these services offered, I wasn't needing to go and purchase these items. I've been in the situation where you need to apply for assistance from the state. So being able to do that by scan, using the scanner at the library, using the internet and the computers, I've been able to do that myself. I've been able to do that for my mother, who has, is on disability from the state. It's a very clunky process, but it's there. Recently, I wanted to save $75 for my septic tank to be pumped. Doesn't sound like a lot, but to me, it was worth it for me to dig down to the cover and uncover it myself. I couldn't find it, but I was able to actually go to the library, check out a metal detector, and find the cover that way. Saved me $75 for digging it myself, plus the cost of a metal detector. I had it out maybe three hours, but that was a very important three hours to me. So I just wanted to share with you that as a library patron, as a library taxpayer, I am in support of the library. And I would like you to consider the amount of time and thought that goes into the library budget by the library director and the library trustees, that they have presented you with a fiscally responsible budget, which is what you are trying to make sure that they present, that you in turn present to the town. So my opinion as a taxpayer for the town of Londonderry, I do want you to support the budget as it was presented on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Name and address, please.
My name's Kimberly Behrs and I live on, at 90 Adams Road in Londonderry. I am currently one of the library trustees, but I'm here to speak with you as a resident of Londonderry. I am also a professional librarian. I have been part of libraries that are part of a consortium since high school. Yes, they've been around that long. And I decided to take a different route. I have three pages here of comments from people who belong to library consortiums. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. I'm sorry.
Please take your time. You think you're fine. I, I have to limit the comments to five minutes.
I will not do that to you. That's what I'm saying. I will not do that to you.
Feel, feel, feel.
I will not do it to you, but I just wanna share one.
Sure. Please feel free.
So this is from a woman named Shirley who lives up in Greenland, New Hampshire. She lived down the Cape for a good portion and belonged to the Clams, it's called, library consortium. She no longer is part of a library consortium because Greenland is a, is a very nice standalone library, but they are not part of a consortium. And when I reached out to my friends and family about this, this is what she said. "I really miss the top-notch technology that being a member of the consortium offers. I really feel being a member of a consortium is a quarter of a century overdue, especially in a vibrant community like Londonderry." And she is absolutely right. This library has come so far in the past few years with our dynamic director over there and the staff is amazing. They deserve this, as much as the residents of Londonderry deserve this. It could be a want, but it is a need. It truly is a need. And I hope that you all will stick to what the bud, what they requested in the budget because that would really make a big difference for a lot of people in this town, like you just heard. I don't want to keep saying the same thing over and over. But I want to say thank you for listening to me and please think wisely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Butcher. I live at 30 Main Street, which as many people in our community know is the Woodmont Commons Building here in town. I'm happy to be here tonight. This is my first time and I'm happy to see my neighbors, although it's more under unfortunate circumstances as we're facing a serious health and safety issue within our fourth floor. We've had a bug infestation since the summer with a non-responsive management company who has been unable to get the situation under control. We have a neighbor who is a hoarder and does not throw her trash away. It has resulted in a vile odor throughout our entire hallway. For context, the first time I smelled it, I thought someone had died in there. I was genuinely concerned for the safety of another human being. We also now all have fly infestations in our apartments where I kill approximately maybe 30 to 40 flies per day. It began in August. It got worse as the colder months started to move in. It was September by the time I noticed flies. Kind of attributed it to colder weather rolling in. They're looking for somewhere warm. I get that. But then neighbors, one of my neighbors came with me tonight, who has also been having this persistent problem with a non-existent management company. I will give kudos to Nick Cottner at the building and code enforcement office, who has been one of the only people to come down, take a look, document, and understand what we're really having to live with every single day. I work from home. I am home all the time. My coworkers see them in the background of my camera. And I mean, overall, it's just a health and safety hazard. Our apartments have been bug bombed. I'm fairly certain they lied about that. We've now been passed on to a new managing company who is once again not making any headway in this progress, in this process. They only claim that they are seeking an active solution. It has been months of running around my apartment with an electric swatter, zapping at them. They fly in my kitchen while I'm cooking for my husband, for our families, for our friends and our loved ones. We have neighbors with children who have the odor entering their apartment, small children. They land on my food while I'm trying to cook. They go into my refrigerator to live amongst my groceries. It is so clearly a health and safety hazard that doesn't seem to be taken seriously. I've lived here for four years. I have paid thousands of dollars in rent to them. I've been active in my community there with my neighbors. And it, it's just a horrible circumstance to see this building and this was an incredible building when I first moved in. I still think it is. I love this community and unfortunately, this is the only way I'm able to be in the Londonderry community. I am tired of being fed scripted answers by the people there, that are there to advocate for myself and my husband and my neighbors and the people that I enjoy living around. And I'm not sure how much longer. I have to sit around on a daily basis, twiddling my thumbs, waiting for somebody to get involved before I came here tonight to present it to everyone here. I thank everyone for their time and their patience.
Can I have your, can you stay there, please? Can I have your name again?
My name is Jessica Butcher.
And what is the apartment number it means?
It is 408.
All right. This is the fire chief.
Yes.
Chief Butler. Chief Butler, the health officer, works as the assistant fire chief, right?
Roger that.
All right. Tomorrow, assistant health officer, on premises.
I will be there.
Take the police with you if you need to. All right? Go down there and find out what's going on.
Roger that.
Please.
I will add that the police have come and I greatly appreciate their commitment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can tell you that the assistant town manager and I spoke with Mr. Cottner about this today. He expressed a lot of the same frustration that, that you heard this evening.
Take the police with you.
Yeah.
All right? And the former owner's office is around the corner. Go, go see him too.
Will do.
And who owns the rest of the, the complex and everything. And, and come back here with an answer ASAP, not necessarily to us, but immediately, okay?
I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question? Excuse me.
Oh, absolutely.
Is the owner the managing partner?
I'm sorry?
Does the?
Matt doesn't own it anymore.
No, I know that, but he's not the owner of, of the building. What I want to know is, is the owner of the building, managing the building, or they suddenly?
It's a management, it's a management company.
Okay.
We, we do have a contact with the owner.
Yeah, and use, use the former owner as well and also
Yeah.
his associate.
Certainly.
All right? So can you make that happen?
Yes, sir.
First thing tomorrow morning?
Yes, sir. Hey, Mike, do me a favor. Give him that, will you give the fire chief that information? So, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you for coming down and bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Martha Smith, 38 Shasta Drive. I have just some quick...
Have a clear path forward, and I feel like we don't have a clear path forward right now. Meaning that we have this, we're talking about spending $500,000. We don't know what that does. We also, I also think that if we spend $500,000, that's committing us for more than $500,000 in the long run.
It's stabilizing the building.
I understand, but it's...
And that's why we're gonna ask the questions and find out what's required from the talent we have in-house. No more engineers. Let's find out what it is we can and we can't do from the people we work with every day and we trust.
Overlay district is?
Tonight, there's a first reading on ordinance 2023 and dash 06 and 2023 dash 07. They're only first readings. 99.9% of the time, we waive the first readings and we move to, to a public hearing, which would be at the next town council meeting on December 18th.
Do they describe to us what they're talking about, though?
They're in the, they're, we don't go into a description. We usually waive the first reading. If we read it at all, we only read the, the portion that is presented, which is the amendment, and then we'll go into it in a public hearing. The planning board has already had a first reading on these two ordinances and they have a public hearing on Wednesday. They'll go into great detail with it. What the planning board will do with it or not do with it, I don't know. They may recommend it. They may not recommend it. We have asked the planning board to go through this process versus having the applicant, which is their option by state law, to come directly to the council. I went to the planning board meeting when I found out about it and said to them, "No, I would like you to go through the, through the planning board. Do not come directly to the council." So that there'll be a public hearing on Wednesday with regard... So that there'll be a public hearing on Wednesday with regards to these ordinances.
Okay. And is there a place where I can look up what these districts are in our town?
Ms. Karen will be happy to supply that to you.
I have copies of the amendments in my department. I can also email them too if you prefer.
And you could tell me what the districts are, what we're talking about in terms of London. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. Amy Agostino, I live at 6 Willow Lane.
Thank you.
Here tonight to advocate in support of the library and to please urge the budget committee to fully fund them as requested. Donna and Erin said pretty much everything, so I'm greatly condensing what I was going to say. But our library is such an amazing resource where residents can access not only books, but newspapers and periodicals and audiobooks, music, movies, recorded lecture series, which are a favorite of my elderly neighbor who's probably in bed by now. Programming activities, all kinds of things I probably haven't even thought of. It's really hard to think of any other comparable service that gives residents so much for their tax dollars. The G-Milks membership, I think, is a really positive development and so long overdue. I've lived here almost 20 years. I was so surprised on moving here that we didn't belong to any kind of library consortium, that we were just a standalone library. I didn't realize those existed anymore. It will increase our access to so much. They obviously gave you a huge overview. Our library already does so much with what they have and I would really greatly appreciate their budget being supported. And a fun fact, because someone mentioned the metal detector, did you know that our library has a library of things that Londonderry residents can borrow for free with a library card? And that includes things like sports equipment and games and puzzles, snowshoes, tools, and even a serger sewing machine? Our library rocks. Please fund them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I have, I have a quick question of them.
Name and address, please.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. How many towns are, libraries are there in that G?
Please address your questions to the council.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry. I was going to ask them during public comment, but I have another question too is when we are putting up positions, can they be put out places where the general public becomes aware of them? Because it's my understanding, we have some positions and they're put on technical position places, but I don't see them.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Employment opportunities.
Do we post employment opportunities?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Generally, they're put on the, on the website, on Facebook, and then as Representative Perez pointed out, for instance, New Hampshire Municipal Association and Indeed.
So they are on the website?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, okay. All right. So that's why I was here. So I'm here because I'm.
Do you want me to answer the question?
You, oh, you did. He did.
Well, under all of our collective bargaining agreements, we have to post.
Okay. All right. I'm here because you all know about a concern that I and other people in town have that has been ongoing, that has been brought to the attention by things in the Londonderry Times and the Dairy News. In the past two months, there have been 12, over 1,200 names taken off the voter list that have been sitting on the voter list from 2018 to 2023. That's a lot of names in five years that were never removed from our voter checklist. And when we have elections that people win or lose by nine votes and we know of perhaps at least 90 people who did not live in Londonderry, voted in the 2020 election, it's of grave concern. And the problem is, is that we're not, they're not being taken off on a regular basis. Every time a deed is registered in Rockingham County, within 10 days, that deed is sent to the town of Londonderry. I believe it's the assessing department. There is absolutely no reason why our supervisors of the checklist are not accessing that information and sending 30-day checking to see if those people whose deeds are no longer here are on the checklist and then sending a 30-day notice. It's when, in speaking to the supervisors of the checklist, they were completely unaware that that was being done. So I have a grave concern that five years of the over 1,200 voters being sitting on our voting lists illegally. And I think we need to do something about it. I know you have no jurisdiction over them. I know Mr. Malaguti has no jurisdiction. The Secretary of State has no jurisdiction. I am working with the Attorney General on this. This cannot be happened. There's no reason why monthly people who move out of town are not sent notices and are removed from the list and it needs to happen.
Have you filed charges with the Attorney General for the 90 people who voted in 2020?
I'm in the process of it.
So you haven't filed charges?
No, I haven't. I've been trying to work with our supervisors of the checklist to get the names off. That was my priority.
So you have 90 names of people who didn't live in town, who voted in 2020.
Potentially lived in town.
Potentially didn't live in town. Someone was just arrested and convicted for this. So if there's 90 people who didn't, who weren't here, who voted in 2020.
Right.
And you're, now you're saying potentially, not.
Well.
So we don't know if there were 90 or not.
We do know that there were 90.
Then please take it to the Attorney General's office and report.
It will be done. But the thing that the most important thing that I had been working on with other people is getting the people who are not eligible to vote off the list before we have votes in January and in February.
As you clearly identified it, please take it to the Attorney General. Yes, please.
Good evening. Cheryl Isaac, 15 Lexington Ave. I've been in Londonderry since 1982 and I've been a member of the library since 1982. And I've got to tell you, I am thrilled we're joining G-Milks. I have friends who were in libraries that part of G-Milks and I've borrowed books through them a few times. So I really think it's time we keep moving forward. I don't really have much else to say. I just think we need to support the library. I've been a patron literally since 1982. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is five minutes, it's three minutes to eight o'clock. I'm going to wrap up public comment here pretty quickly. Is there anyone else? Are we going to let the?
I have a library comment.
Yeah.
I don't.
And who would you be, sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, I am Kim Bernard, your police chief. Just want to take a quick moment and highlight some outstanding work that your Londonderry police officers did and were recognized for. This past weekend, I attended the New Hampshire Association of Chiefs of Police Conference in North Conway, where as you guys can imagine, chiefs get together for trainings. We sit through classes together. And then on Saturday night, the New Hampshire Chiefs of Police Association, along with the 100 Club, seeks and asks municipalities across the state for acts of bravery, heroism, things that the police have done in their community. The 208 police departments, never mining state and UNH facilities or municipalities, there was four officers recognized on Saturday night. Three of them were your police department employees. Sergeant Hallock on the right, Officer Nathan Slack with the best beard in the business, and Officer Tyler McDonald, who's going to work on his hair game, I'm told. These men.
Coming from the guy with more hair than anybody we know.
Sir.
Sir, I'm going to tell the story if you're not careful.
No, I don't mind. I was.
That's how I called you one time and you told me I had to wait till you were finished blow drying your hair.
Can I speak on that first? This, this is really entertaining. I was asked by another chief if this was dyed. So if anybody is asking, no one is not. And I can tell you that the hotel blow dryer is terrible. They give you a two-foot cord, it's attached to the wall. It's a real struggle, but anyway. Back to the real business why I'm up here. I just want to highlight some of these men for you. Last year, officers responded to an apartment complex in the town of Londonderry. Distract male threatening people with a firearm and a knife. These are the things that we often talk about as first responders, firemen, running into burning buildings and issues and car crashes. These things right here would make anyone in this room, the vast majority of us, walk away. These three men have families. These three men are sworn to protect every single person in this room. And they do it knowing that they could have been shot, stabbed. The gentleman they were trying to speak with tried to run him off the road, tried to get in his car and take off when they responded, tried to drive his vehicle up onto the apartment complex's stairs to get back into the building to do what he was saying that he was going to do. All the while telling the police he's not going alive, he needs to be shot or he will shoot them. These men made a courageous effort to follow him into the building using sound tactics, sound judgment, which reverts back to what we talked about, outstanding training and leadership. These men were able to get him in a corner of the apartment complex while he was trying to attempt to get into a department room. These men were able to take him into custody without injury to anybody. These men were given the distinguished service medal on behalf of the New Hampshire Association of Chiefs of Police and the 100 Club. I can say this, out of the four officers, three from Londonderry, I was beyond proud to stand up in front of them, on their side with them, to receive this outstanding achievement. It's an achievement because they finished the mission. We hear the fire chief always talk about the mission. The mission is to go home to these men, to their wives and the kids every single day. Their mission is to make sure that these people don't become victims of, of crimes such as this. And they did that. So I wanted to share that with you all. Again, thank you for supporting your police department. I thought it was important to see you.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, public comment is closed. New business ordinance 2023 dash 06, an amendment to the Londonderry zoning ordinance relative to section 4.6.3 of the floodplain overlay district. First reading, I'll accept the motion to waive reading.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in affirmative. The public hearing will be on December 18th at 7:00 in this room. Number two, ordinance 2023 dash 07, an amendment to the Londonderry zoning ordinance relative to adding a hospital as a permanent use in the gateway business district. First reading, I'll take a motion to waive first reading.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First reading is waived. Public hearing will be on December 18th at 7:00 PM in this room. Next item, pickleball task force.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to report as well that audio has been restored on TV or should be restored on TV.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what the story is with Drew's blood pressure, but I think we got to sort it out.
Tell him to see something about Kim and hair. Since we all suffered, otherwise. Okay, are we pickleball? You guys ready?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Chairman, there is a, there is as well a resolution on unanticipated fire revenue. I'm not sure if you.
Did I jump over the public hearing? My, my apologies. You guys can stay right there for just a second. Resolution 2023 dash 25, accept the unanticipated revenue for the fire station training, chief and finance director.
Mr. Chair, as we spoke about earlier this, this evening, the Londonderry Fire Department is very young experience-wise. With that, we are always looking for additional revenues to secure, to bring training into the organization. We've done that in the amount of $17,500. I'm going to turn it over to Battalion Chief Jeff Anderson, who is our training officer in charge, and he's going to give a brief update on what this is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. Pretty simple. The state fire academy offers grant-funded classes, which they will cover for, cover the cost of the class, overtime and backfill so members can attend these classes. So by approving this resolution, any state backfill course that is taken at Londonderry Fire, we can receive monies from the state that goes back to the general fund.
Questions? Sorry, getting more Texas telling me audio's working. So ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there any questions from the audience with regards to this item only for the fire training? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second. The motion is to approve the unanticipated revenue. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in affirmative. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, sorry for skipping over to you. Gentlemen, sorry for making you wait.
It's okay. We're all right.
Please introduce yourselves and then please proceed.
Of course, of course. Hello. My name is Brian Smolak. I live on 25 Molton Drive.
And Steve Feziani, I live at 12 Gary Drive.
So these gentlemen have been asked by the council, they led the task force for what pickleball may or may not look like going out into the future, and they're here to share their findings. So please proceed.
Of course, Mr. Chairman and Council. I'd like to thank you. Thank all of you for authorizing the steering committee, the task force, I should say, for allowing us to do what we did. We enjoyed it. It was a lot of fun. And tonight, we're going to get a chance to share with you what we learned. I also want to thank some of the members here who accepted our challenge to play pickleball and get out there. That was a lot of fun, too. And of course, the challenge remains to the rest of you, too. Get out there. So.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did he find out that you can get pickleball equipment from the library?
Thank you. I don't know.
But we don't have any courts.
So we have half the problem solved. So tonight's discussion items, as you can see up there, is we're going to talk a bit about the team. There are some advisors that are both external to the Londonderry community that helped us out a great deal. I'm going to share our research with you. We did submit an RFQ, which many of you took a look at before you sent it out, and thank you for that. We're going to talk about the court layout options we've considered, all the vendors we've contacted, estimates from them in terms of what we can expect in terms of budget going forward here. Items of discussion last time we were here about the reserve study or what the maintenance would be to have courts on an ongoing basis. We have a resolution, an option and proposal about how that can be solved very quickly and very cheaply. And then, of course, we'll talk about where we stand as a town when it comes in comparison with other pickleball courts in other towns. Okay? And of course, our findings and our recommendations. All right, let me go back a bit here. Going the wrong direction.
Other way.
Hold on. I think I got it. There you go. There's our task force right there. Myself, I was given the opportunity to be the chair of that and of course, Steve is my vice. With us tonight are a couple of members, and if they would just raise their hand to be recognized, please. We have Mike Nader. We have Heather Carey. Christine Hady. And Margot, Margot Feziani. I want to thank you all. You know, when it comes to terms of how much time we've invested, I don't want to put a number together here, but it's a lot. We've met many times. We've spent more time meeting with people outside of Londonderry to help us achieve our goal. And to my second point, to the right of my slide here, the trusted advisors, something that we took advantage of, and it was a great gift, and that is Litchfield has built a pickleball facility that is to be admired. They put a big investment into it, did quite a bit of study. We, as a committee, met with their committee multiple times. Their president, well, the Chair of their Recreation Department, Mr. Ames, I met with him, I understand exactly what he did, and wishes he did differently, which we've learned from. The President of their Pickleball Association, which we'll talk about in a second, about Lunedary Pickleball Association, too. I'm on the phone with him at least once a week or so, learning about what he did and how he shared with us what he would do differently, and what we should do going forward. Steve, you're good friends with Ted Curtin. Ted is the man who is building a pickleball court right now in Hempstead, indoor and outdoor. He's, the courts are being built as we speak. And then, of course, you spoke with Brian.
And I spoke with Brian, he's a friend of mine from the Nashville Parks and Rec. Basically, I was talking to him about the maintenance costs and the continued maintenance of the facility once they're built. Nashville has something like 19 courts overall, so they're a good resource to use.
So, I think the whole thing behind the premise of our committee was here is not to reinvent the wheel, but to take advantage of the wheels that have been already built, and that's where we stand today. Some lessons that we learned here, just to let you know that there isn't a town around us that we haven't talked to, and there's the list right there, with the rec commissioners, with the pickleball committee members, we've understood what they went through and how they went through it. So, we have lots of evidence and information to help us kind of get a real jumpstart on what we're about to share with you tonight. One of the first things I did, and again, thank you for reviewing the draft of this, we did submit an RFQ out to, I'm going to say a dozen or more people out there, in every walk and shape of what it takes to build a pickleball facility. What we did is we broke it down into seven phases, and the phases are broken down as follows, the site prep and the foundation work, what is going to cost the surface, what are the best costs, best processes and the best cost when it comes to surfacing, fencing, lighting, a center walkway, we'll talk about that in a second, Steve will describe that to you. What would it take to put benches in there to make this really kind of like a first-quality, top-notch pickleball facility that Lunedary deserves to have? And I'll get into some real reasons about why we want to think that way going forward. Go ahead, Steve.
And this one's mine. So this is a six-court design that we came up with, and if you notice, there's Court One and Two, the two on the left, they're slightly isolated from the rest, and that is hopefully what we're going to call our tournament courts. So they're a little broader, there's room there for bleachers, if someone wanted to have a tournament or host, the town could host one, you could bring in bleachers with no problem. All the lighting is there and marked, there's four points of egress, that is for safety and security. I didn't want to have a one-point access where EMS couldn't get in there if they had to. And if the center area with those, the horizontal line, that's the covered walkway, I know it, it's kind of a stretch. When we were starting this, we were like, what do we want? Let's build out from there. And it's a, it's a covered area. I mean, every time you play on these things, you're in direct sunlight for hours on end, so having a shaded area would be nice for the people that are playing it. Some benches in the middle, and really, that's about it, and some lighting if that's possible.
So that's our six-court configuration, and on to our...
This is the 10-court design, essentially the same thing, the two courts on the left are isolated. The whole idea here is it's just a little bit bigger. There's some fine details that Mike might know about, where the gates to the different courts are offset. One of the problems that I found in Litchfield is if you hit the ball wrong, it goes off your court, out of the court, across the quarter, and into the other court, all the way to the other fence. So, you experienced that once.
I spent a minute or two...
Yeah, chasing it down. And I was very careful to point it out to them that we didn't do it that way, on purpose. But essentially, this is just a bigger picture of the previous slides, so it's really a 10-court design. You could easily host tournaments here, and hosting a tournament would be very lucrative to the town if we decided to do that.
And just for the record here, Steve and I play a lot of pickleball. We play just about every court within a 20-mile stretch of where we sit right now. You know, some pickleball courts, they have pickleball facilities, have 10 courts on a given weeknight at 4:00 till 6:00 or till dusk, they're packed. There's a line out the door. Every Saturday morning from basically 8:00 until, say, 2:00, they're packed. And we're talking about some of the bigger courts that are in Nashville and Manchester. So to think about six courts, while that's doable, it'll be crowded, especially with the interest that's growing right now. 10 courts, we think that might be viable option for covering ourselves for a long time. Okay? Let me talk about the vendors I've spoken to, and again, here are the phases that we have, one through two, the site prep. We talked with both American Asphalt as well as Continental. As far as resurfacing, we had lots of folks there that are very good and very skilled at resurfacing. Again, everyone I've spoken to has done the work here around us, so there is evidence, there are testimonies, there are support and resources to say they stand by these people.
I'm going to interrupt, sorry. The reason we went to these people is because the other towns recommended them. They've already done work with them, they're already recommended, they already agree with what they did and how they did it. So they all came highly recommended.
Fencing, the same thing goes, no shortage on that. You'll see, a lot of these names should be recognized by you because they have done some business here with the town of Lunedary in the past for a variety of different reasons here. Court lighting, we looked into that. When it came to the overhead protection, as Steve was talking about, from the weather, from the rain, you know, we didn't get anybody who wanted to bid on that, but that's okay because that's not necessarily required at Phase One or at this point right now. The same thing goes with benches, and let me say this about the benches, who's to say we can't have some kind of a donation program, like many towns have, where you find a family or a business that wants to have their name on a picnic bench, or any kind of bench there, they're willing to go ahead and donate. So this may become a non-option for us to have to worry about going for...
Or Eagle Scouts. They always look for a project. I work with the Scouts as well, so...
Okay, let's talk about estimates of budget. Here's where we took our proposals, our quotations that came back, we filtered them, went through them, came up with some information to give with you today. This is going to give you a range about what's it going to cost. There'll be a summary slide to follow this, but basically, anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000 worth of prep work and pavement to do the six-court, $250,000 to $500,000 to do the 10-court. And then it breaks down from there in terms of the size of the court versus the size of the cost, depending upon more lights, more fencing, okay, more surfacing, more lining, more nets. There you have it, right there. And I do have written copies of all of that information, all those proposals that we've received, or quotes. If I had to summarize, here we go. The high, the low, okay? For six courts, we're looking at about $360,000, and there's a high of $560,000 to get the courts in. And again, this is to build the courts. And also, we have $490,000 as well as $740,000, that's what it costs. Now, interesting enough, in speaking with some people on Cape Cod that I know, speaking with some people up in Maine that I know, we're getting a deal. We're talking about people coming in with a six-court facility in Cape Cod for over a million dollars. I don't know where that's coming from, but that's the kind of quotes they're getting. So, I'm not suggesting that this is wrong or that we lowballed, I'm just suggesting this is what I'm getting versus what I'm hearing. Okay?
Questions?
I have a question.
Please proceed.
Sure, Sarah.
What, if this fails through a vote, do you guys have any sort of like backup plan for yourselves?
I wish I had a rich grandparent or somebody like that.
Because I don't want you to be like struck out twice in a row, you know?
Well, you know, let me talk to that, Sarah, because it's not a double strike, because the first time that it was a citizen petition, it wasn't a warrant article, that went through that didn't pass or didn't receive a vote, and it was for the engineering study. Quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, no one cares about engineering studies or spending money on them, people care for results. And so, we're not talking about a study with what we're proposing tonight. A study, the study's a part of it, of course, but we're going for the big picture because that. But, you know, to answer your question, if we strike out, I'll be bummed, because what does that mean for me? What is it? Well, let me cut to the chase, because I really want to focus on this later, but I got to say it now. Pickleball is now a collegiate sport, there are scholarships, you know, there are, let me see if I can get to this right now. Well, this is about the reserve fund, but let me, we're on...
Back to that, Sarah.
Yeah. Let me just show you something here. Oops. Oh, Brian. Uh-oh.
Standby.
Thank you. This thing's got a touchy trigger.
I just wanted to say, I didn't touch it.
I know, I'm driving and I'm dangerous, or so says my wife. Okay.
This one.
There we go. Going down to the midpoint there for now, it's an NCAA sport. It's sanctioned, it's competitive, it's going to be getting scholarships, it's going to be all over TV, you watch in no time right now. The second thing is, down south, it is a varsity sport, it's a scholastic sport, and they compete like you can't believe. How long will it be before Lunedary is going to become the user of, or the recipient of this as a scholastic sport? And if they do, where are they going to play? They cannot play on the tennis courts. If you put a mark on a tennis court that's not official, that court's invalid, can never be used again for any kind of scholastic tennis event. You have to have your own pickleball courts. What I'm suggesting here is that it's not now, it's not a matter of when, it's a matter of, not a matter of, you know, when, it's a matter of, it's going to happen now, it's going to be a matter of in the future, we're going to have to do this. If we're going to be a competitive, remember, we're a Division One winner, and you name a sport, we've got the history of winning as Lunedary goes. It's going to be pickleball, why not lead the way now? Why not build a world-class facility? Why not build a championship facility like Steve's suggesting here? It's worth it, and will become the mark of everyone wants to shoot for as far as quality and competitiveness. That's my thought, that's what's driving me to do this. So, there's no signal, no sign for slowing down, and so we have to get a jump on this, is this the perfect time to do that? Let me go to the top of this slide right here and just point this out. Yes, it's 11% compounded growth every year. You hear it all the time, people are growing right there, but what you need to know is that the under 24-year-old crowd, the younger folks, okay, they're the fastest-growing segment of the business right now. But what we also need to recognize, and I'll say it now, we at Lunedary do a great thing when it comes to our youth. I've coached and my kids have played on soccer fields, on baseball diamonds, it's been tremendous. But now my kids are gone, and now I'm going to be an elder one of these days, what's in it for me? Right? What's in it for me? I can't play softball anymore, I'm not going to be playing soccer, where am I going to go? And we had that senior expo about maybe two months ago here at the school. I've got three full pages of names, addresses, emails, and phone numbers of people who want to play, want to learn, want to go, want to talk to people like Steve who's a coach to get out there and learn how to play. So there's no shortage of interest when the seniors go. And quite frankly, can you name one thing we do here in town that's outdoor recreational for seniors? You can't. Not today. Not today. You know, the library doesn't count.
Along those same lines, that last number, 52%, 55% are older, the core players in this game are still older, my age, or even younger, actually, but 52% of the players are 55 or older right now, and it's a great outlet, just something we'd like.
Let's talk about the reserve fund, because you did bring that up the last time you're together here, and it's a concern, and it's a viable one, and I'd like to address that, and I'd like to just relieve your concern. In talking with the people in Litchfield, what they've done is they've built what's called Litchfield Pickleball Association. Yes, there's membership, there's a fee to it, and that fee can be anywhere from $30 to $50, because remember now, they have indoor courts there, too. $30 for outdoor, 50 for both indoor and outdoor, that's how they do it. Hey, I hope someday we have indoor courts here in Lunedary, but that's not today. With that $30 to $50, they have gained more money than what's needed to maintain their courts. No reserve fund, they kept them painted, they buy new nets, they tear the holes in the fences, they keep up with it. As a matter of fact, what I learned from the President yesterday is that we actually cut a check back to the town for other needs when it comes to recreational.
And they are building the pavilion now.
And as Steve just mentioned to me, they're going to build a pavilion, so it's a self-funding organization. And talking with Steve and Steve's wife, Margot, we've already chatted about how we can't wait to become and build ourselves a Lunedary Pickleball Association, where we would collect the fees, we'd be, as I said, we'd be a 501(c)(3). Well, first of all, if you want us to do a 501(c)(3), we can. All right, we're prepared to do it. Steve's done it before.
With the Scouts.
With the Boy Scouts, and I would follow his lead. You know, we'll have membership, we'll give, what does membership earn you? Privileges, what does that mean? Court time. You want Saturday mornings between the hours of, say, 8:00 and noon, these, let's say we have 10 courts, these five courts are dedicated for nothing but members, and we will maintain and closely monitor that. Any monies that transfer hands will be controlled closely between ourselves and Town Hall, there will be every chance to audit, so nothing goes sideways financially.
Just for the record, this is at your discretion, of course. If you guys wanted to handle it internally, that's up to you, but we are willing to do the work if you are so inclined. I mean, we're just pointing it out there. Brian is willing to do the work. And the library.
So you get the picture here, that we thought about, what are some things to make this go as smoothly as possible and protect ourselves on the backend? You know, when it comes to other things like liability insurance, I'm not the best person, but we have to consider that, and maybe the fees that come from the LBA cover liability insurance for what the town might be at risk of doing. It's all part of how to take care of itself and pay for itself. We've thought about that. So there you go, the task force and what we confirmed. Let me get into where do we stand? So what you see there right now are all the towns around us, and what kind of pickleball courts, outdoor, viable, playable pickleball courts. What you don't see on that list? Dedicated courts. What you don't see on that list is Lunedary. Think about it, look at that list. Everybody around us around here is on that list except for Lunedary.
I'm sorry, Brian. These are dedicated courts, none of these are tennis courts that are converted for both use. These are only outdoor courts, only designed for pickleball. So we didn't include anything interior, indoors, and we didn't include any tennis courts that are dual-use.
Okay? You know, to the right of that, I say the words Lunedary Leads the Way, that's our moniker, right? We say that all the time, and it's true, but it's not true when it comes to pickleball, and it's not true when it comes to recreational options for our senior citizens. It's just not. And the bottom there, and this is, again, talking to the President of Litchfield, he's going to start coming up with a way, you're saying, if you're not a resident, don't play.
In Manchester, too.
Don't come here. We're going to have ID cards, and if you don't have one, get off the court, and if you want to argue about it, the police can't wait to throw you in the back of their car. Okay? They mean business. So, it's here.
Derry is already doing it.
You didn't see the look on the Deputy Chief's face when you said that.
We're going to bring hair dryers with us.
We have training, and we train.
Anyway.
And then we educate, and then we train some more.
So, the whole idea of courts being off limits to non-residents is becoming a real factor that we need to be aware of here, and it won't be long before it affects us, unless we do something first. Okay?
We'd rather get ahead of the curve if we can. I mean, it's coming. We're just going to eventually be in trouble.
Well, Steve just stole my first bullet.
Ah, sorry.
That's okay, Steve, you've done it many times. Get ahead of the demand curve. We have to get a demand curve here. We want to avoid, I want to see us avoid, there's nowhere to play in town scenario, and that is a real fact. I hope I've conveyed tonight to you that that is about to occur, unless we have a way to address it here. If it's a high school sport, you know, we have got to get in the game, because what are we going to do when all of a sudden we have to go to someone else's courts to play competitive pickleball? We don't want that. We want them to come to us. Okay? And again, we want to provide a platform, you know, for a valuable platform for recreational needs to our seniors, there's no doubt about it. And, you know, what I was telling you about these names with three pages of names, addresses, and phone numbers, that was just four hours at the senior expo. If we made it a dedicated approach, and we're doing that right now with my colleague Mike, we're reaching out to the senior community, you know, that's going to be thousands of people, you know, in no time. If I have 100 already, four hours, I can't imagine how big that list will be. And what's nice about this is that that's the voter block. I know we're going to go to, we're thinking about going to a warrant article, I get that, and that's fair, but that's a voter block, but I want us to be creative and think outside the box. What else can we do to get the ball rolling here? So you'll see my second bullet there is, you know, you have an undesignated fund balance, I know that. I know there's a great amount of money in there, I know there's some dedicated resources for it there. I'd like you to consider, can you kickstart us in some way, shape, or form to get the ball rolling with some undesignated funds? And of course, it's a warrant article, and the voters have to vote on it, but it would be just such a kick in the right direction if we could do something in that possible direction. The third thing there is that, you know, you asked about the engineering study, you mentioned it before, Sarah, about that, okay? We still need to do that. We still need to do that. If the state's going to approve the permits for this, they're not going to prove it because I, I'm a good guy and I have, I have an aerial shot of the ground. No, they're going to want to do all they need to do as far as making sure the ground is not wetlands. What's the situation going to have the impact going to be on the, on the area? We're going to need to spend money on that. For sense, for a source of maybe estimating what that might be, I think we said it was $7,000 two years ago. Of course, so, well, 16%, you know, inflation, so I'll bet you it's closer to 10 now. So that's where you got to start thinking about, maybe as much as 10 for engineering study. Maybe less, hopefully less. Maybe we go out for a competitive bid on that. I'd be glad to help when that went too. Okay? And then, you know, the last one is this, I, I do need this. I need the Town Hall back warrant. A citizen's petition, we know where that's going to go. Nowhere. So I do need a Town Hall back warrant to go ahead and alert the voters that you're behind us, that you see the need, and that you want to see this go forward. And, and that's it. That, there you have it.
About it.
You know, we hope you, hope, please, any questions or anybody have any comments about what we presented?
I just want to commend you guys for the amount of research that you guys have done and put forth, and the amount of time that you guys have put forth to this. It's quite impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not just us, it's the whole group.
I understand. Yes, the whole task force.
The whole task force.
Anyone have any questions? We can talk about this more in Budget Workshop, but is there anything for this presentation? Everybody good? Gentlemen, outstanding job. Thank you very much.
Thank you back.
Thank you to everyone.
And to the library.
Do they rent out pickleball paddles?
They do.
Really?
Wait, 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 wait. They didn't mention that?
They did.
They did.
Did I step out for that part, that the library rents out pickleball paddles? Well, just one, very interesting. Thank you for that.
Not in the car rental business, are you?
You never know. I got some at my house if you need some. The kids grew up and left. The snowshoes are still there. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next item. Budget workshop discussion. All right, before we open up the budget workshop discussion, um, the town treasurer contacted me because she has been receiving feedback in the community that people seem to be misunderstanding something. Want to be very clear about something. People have been approaching her saying, well, you're eliminating the town treasurer. Ladies and gentlemen, it is state law that we have to have a town treasurer. We are not talking about eliminating the town treasurer. The discussion has been, what has been recommended by the town treasurer and the finance director is, is that we look at the possibility of appointing town treasurers mainly with the purpose of maybe be able to do a background check on the people that we are going to allow to manage 126 million plus dollars. That's what the discussion is. We are not eliminating the town treasurer position, just so we're clear. Mr. Finance Director, of, of budget discussion.
Absolutely. So for this one, I don't have many updates compared to the last time that we had met. I have provided you with an updated tax rate calculation sheet, which is available online. You'll notice that the cost per penny on the tax rate has increased from 60,000 to 61. That's due to the valuation of the town, the MS1 that was filed, and the anticipated 1.5% increase for next year. Other than that, we have reordered them to put them more in groups, I guess is the best way to put it. If you remember the last time, I think we had a couple of capital reserves at the bottom, and some in the middle, some at the top. So we've essentially just reorganized those. One of the items that you wanted me to come back with was the cost regarding the firefighters. And if we were to do a six-month, if we were to hire them July 1st, and if we were to hire them on January 1st. Without overtime, you are looking at about 351,144.25, which is about 5.8 cents on the tax rate. With overtime, and I took the average overtime for the past three years per firefighter, you're looking at about 422,000, which is about 6.9 cents on the tax rate. If you were to do all four for the full year, you're looking at 600, or sorry, 465,000 for no overtime, and that's 7.6 cents. If you were to do it with overtime, you're looking at 559,477, which is about 9.2 cents on the tax rate. And that is assuming a family plan for both dental and health insurance, as well as looking at their uniform allowance, short-term, long-term disability, as well as life insurance. And HRS, Medicare as well. The prosecutor?
Hold on. Questions on the firefighters? Please proceed.
All righty. The prosecutor, assuming the 95,000 that we had talked with as a salary. And again, assuming family plans for health insurance and dental, including all the additional items such as short-term, long-term, and life, insurance, FICA, and Medicare, you are looking at 162,024.11, which is about 2.7 cents on the tax rate based on the current estimations.
Questions?
Jumping back to the fire department for a minute. Wouldn't we expect overtime not to increase because we're adding those, those positions? Or would we expect an increase? Maybe that's a question for the fire chief.
That, that would be typically, I don't believe we, in warrant articles, we don't typically budget for overtime. But I believe that there was a request for me to include it in the last meeting.
Okay.
So that's why I included it, and I included it without it, so everybody can kind of have the full picture. Because essentially, they will go into the calculation, even if we don't budget for it in the warrant article, they will go into the calculation next year, and I want to make sure the public is aware that there is that potential impact going forward. But ideally, once you're fully staffed, and I don't want to speak for fire or police, ideally, you'll see a downtick because you have the additional staffing.
So in other words, the average would go down, even, we're using today's average.
Correct.
And if we brought them on, the future average may be lower.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
But for budgeting purposes, you need to put it in just in case.
That will be up to you guys whether you want to include it or not. I wanted to make sure you guys had it available to you so you could make.
He's saying, he was asked the question to provide it. Copy that.
Yep.
Yep, good, thanks.
Any questions on the prosecutor?
Said 162,000 all in.
That's loaded labor plus insurance.
Correct. It's 95, 14 for the salary, and then 67, 10 roughly. 67,010 for the benefits, which includes retirement, FICA, Medicare, all those insurances.
Any questions on the prosecutor? I'm saying whether they're doing it or not right now. No questions? Okay. All right. All right, after the, um, rather theatrical discussion that I caused with regards to the Lions Hall, we had a, the councillor Butler and I met with some of the staff at the Lions Hall. I think everyone pretty much could agree that 3.5 million dollars is off the table. The direction we asked the, we asked the town manager to take and to, and to seek and get us some answers on was is, what would it look like to try to put the building back in a working condition so that it can be shared and used by multiple organizations? As well as by the town, with the understanding that it would come out of the, under the control of the town manager's office. We, we talked about a number of 500,000. I don't know if it's the right or the wrong number. We had the right people in the room. We talked about how you would fix the floor with a foundation. I don't remember the exact words we used, but there's a way to actually fill the floor so that it would be stabilized going out into the future, which would stabilize the building. We asked them to go out and look at a, an electrical contractor to see where do we stand with electricity. We asked them to rope off the second floor so that we can avoid ADA at this time. And we, we asked, the fire department has, I kind of noticed today, the fire department had a vendor in there today to look at the building for capacity of 99 and below. So if we go, of course, if we go over 100, we got to put a sprinkler in. So we don't have any, we don't have any firm numbers yet. Hopefully, we'll have them by the next meeting. What we explained to them at the meeting was is that we have to have some sort of an idea here before the end of December. Or what you're looking at is mothballing the building for two years. Because we're not going to go to the voters with 3.5 million dollars. And, um, because it's, we really, it's just, we can't really put that in front of them and put complete justification there for it. So, um, because if we don't move on it now, we got to make sure the building's good for another two years, not being used. There's a lot of moving pieces. We may decide to do one part and not the other part, but we still need more answers. So that's giving you an update on the, on the Lions Hall, from what we've been able to discover so far. Did I miss anything?
No, you didn't miss anything.
No, they may come back and say it's 250. They may come back and say it's 800. We, we, we just don't know yet. So that's on the Lions Hall. What else did we, we, we promise answers on here, sir?
That was all you guys asked me for.
I'm looking for you to help me recollect.
John, may I ask, in your discussion that you had on the Lions Hall, was also discussed about handicap accessibility for the bathrooms?
We talked, we talked about, yeah, we talked about redoing the bathrooms. Nick was there. He told us what we had to do by code. We looked at the back ramp. What do we have to do there? Everybody got, like, there were like half a dozen assignments, and the town manager authorized the assignments to be done, and we're waiting on answers.
Could I speak on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you mind?
Tell me what I didn't recollect.
No.
We don't have.
First, we're a problem, so we've.
You don't have to worry about that. I lost it in high school, kid. No problem. With regards to Lions Hall. Some people want to rip down. Some people want to keep it. I personally would like to keep it, but I'm going to listen to what the people have to say. I asked John when we were going through this, you know, why was the Lions Hall shut down in the first place? What was it? And the only reason why that Lions Hall was shut down was because of the failure of the floor. Now, I was part of that original fix on the floor. The intent on the floor was not to have 300 people on the floor. When we had the elections with the presidential elections, Trump came in, what do we have? 300 people plus.
Probably close to that.
TV and stands and, uh, when Kevin Smith ran for governor, same thing. So that's what started the failure on the floor. That's why we closed it. We didn't close it because of the electrical, although I'm sure it needs to be updated. We didn't close it because of the, the, the roof was leaking. We didn't close it because of the heating system. Do they all need to be updated? Yeah, they do. But the reason why we closed it was because of the floor. So in my opinion, to open it back up, fix the floor. That's the minimum that we have to do. As far as the ADA goes, there were some people that say that the ADA Act is not law. It is law. That's, that's misinformation. It is law. Now, if you look at it in that rig, I've had experience with it with the public transportation system in Massachusetts. So I know a little bit about it. I can tell you, if you look into it, when it comes to municipalities, there was a comment made that we don't have to follow it. That's wrong. Municipalities, both state and local, have to follow regs. Now, when you start looking into the regs, because I was, well, we have to fix the ramp, we have to fix the bathroom. There's provisions in there, and I haven't read into it, but there are provisions in there that, uh, gives you some leeway on historic buildings. So, you know, my, my attitude is, let's fix the floor. Let's live with what we've got now. As far as the ADA, we do have a bathroom that we considered ADA. Let's take a look at that, see what we can do. And the same thing with the ramp out back. It may not be perfect, but I think understanding the relationship of the building and historical value, and the fact that it's there, I think there are some exceptions. There's, there could be some minor, minor adjustments. I, I, I think that, and I want to clarify this, is when we sent Dave Wally out to do the study, we knew what people wanted. I've been in the town, I don't know, 36 years. I don't know how long you've been. But I've had my kids go through it. I've been to birthday parties, wedding receptions, Pop Warner football. So what is that building, someone asked me, or asked us, what's the building used for? Well, I'm going to tell you, it's very simple. Look up the definition of a community building. The Old Town Hall, the Lions Hall, has always been used as a community building. The difference is the Lions were controlling it. They were the ones that were managing it. There's the difference. So when people sit there and say, whoa, what are you going to use it for? The same thing we've been using it for, the community. So I, I think that that $3 million budget was a wish list. It was on square foot costs, when sometimes architects and engineers, if there are any in the room, they'll look up a commercial kitchen, and it'll be $150 a square foot. And that's how they come up with a, a list. We didn't have the time, or we haven't had the time, to, to narrow that list down and determine what we really want. Do we want a kitchen? Don't we want a kitchen? How much would that kitchen cost if we didn't want the kitchen? So you, you know, you start to backtrack, and you start to spring down the monies. I think it's viable to open it up myself personally. I'm going to listen to the people. It'd break my heart if we had to tear it down, because that's history. And I think that if we can get by this, put the floor in, use it, yeah, is it going to cost us a little bit more? Money for heat and air conditioning and things like, yeah, it's gonna. But it has been all along. And like I said, the Lions were managing it. The town wasn't. The town owned the building. And then if we can get by this, and once the numbers come in, then look at, at breaking it further down, and maybe we phase it in. Maybe we have to do the electrical, upgrade the electrical. But not all at once. And that $3 million, that didn't scare me, to be honest with you. If you know the construction, that didn't, that really didn't scare me at all. I mean, Bob Slater knows. I knew where it was coming from, and it's, it was a pie in the eye type price. And believe me, I don't think it'll come anywhere near that. But that's what I have to say about it, Johnny.
Sounds good, Jimmy.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity.
You all done now?
All done.
Okay, anything else on the Lions Hall? We're going to wait for more information, and then we're going to try to figure out what to do and try to put, you know, something that's been here since 1818 that, you know, Ann wants me chained to. You know, and see if we can get that back in some sort of, she's not here. So, so we can get that back in some sort of shape so that the community can have a place to have birthday parties and things like that, and we can figure that out going forward. Okay, anything, anything else on the budget?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, I'm pleased to have been able to supply the Budget Committee and the Town Council tonight with the 2024 draft warrant. This is as early as I can remember it being presented. A lot will change, as it always does, in terms of the warding throughout this budget process. But I wanted to just flag a couple of items for everybody's awareness. It has all of the regular warrant article items that we have been discussing, including funding trust funds, capital reserves, what have you. But there are a couple of unusual items this year, and they start with Article Number 3. I've been talking with the Utilities Committee and the Town Council for months about a water infrastructure project. I think there's pretty good awareness about this around town. That project, in very summary fashion, is this. St. Gobain has certain obligations within the consent decree. It's really the eastern third of town. They are required to either do point-of-entry treatment systems or water line extensions within the consent decree. And they need to run a water main down a portion of High Range Road in order to make those connections. We are proposing, and we, with the Town Council's consensus, to do a lot more of that project, to do a water main all the way down High Range Road to the vicinity, vicinity of Route 102. That will form the, the foundation, really, for a, a larger public water system in Lunedary. And it will allow us to mitigate PFAS contamination in some of the most heavily contaminated neighborhoods in town that are not within the consent decree. The total cost of that project is roughly $25 million. We are seeking a $10 million grant from the state, and with the Town Council's consensus, proposing to bring $2 million in Lunedary ARPA money to the project. And then we are anticipating that St. Gobain will contribute somewhere in the neighborhood of $13 million for its work within the consent decree. The, it is looking like we are going to come roughly $2 million short in that application for $10 million in grant funding. Hence Article Number 3. And this is a request to fund a loan through, the debt service on a loan through the PFAS remediation loan fund that would allow us to close that delta and do this project. Even with that news, I, I would suggest that getting a $25 million project for $4 million, only two of which would need to be raised through taxation, is a, is a pretty good deal. And that's why it's on here in this form. I also have supplied to everyone the application that we made to the trust fund. It's, it's pretty technical, but it's got some good information in there as well. And I expect to have more information on all of that soon.
Hold on. Mr. Chair, how, what are we looking at for an interest rate from the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services?
Yes, it's a, it's a good question, councillor Combs. And one of the reasons this grant make, this loan application makes so much sense is because the interest rate is 1% during construction and 3.5% thereafter. And we can do it for, there is some flexibility in the, in the term. But the debt service on that loan, depending on the term, would run somewhere, and these are approximate numbers, we're, we're working to, to refine them, somewhere between $137,000 a year for a longer-term loan and $430,000 a year for a shorter-term loan.
What's considered long and what's considered short?
Long would be 20, and short would be 5.
I, I would say we'd probably lean more towards the 20 so that the future users can pay for it. I mean, people who are going to benefit from it should pay for it. That's just a guess.
And yes?
Makes sense to me.
Well, anybody else on water? I do understand.
So can I just chime in? I spoke with them today, and so I just want to clarify one of Mike's comments about the 3.5% interest. If, for whatever reason, this decides to get put off, they reevaluate the interest every August. So once we enter into the agreement, we're stuck at that 3.5. But if we were to put it off for whatever reason, it could potentially increase and go from there.
Understood.
So I just wanted to let everyone know about.
Well, and if, if, if Justin Campo is clarifying my comments, then I'm in pretty good company. At this point.
Ladies and gentlemen, please understand, we've had discussions about water for four and a half years now. The number, the number we started at for an entire water system for the town was $200 million. That number doesn't go away. $25 million is the start, and then we go from there. There'll be, now, what we have done is we have met with DES, we've had conversations with the state. There are future programs that we can be eligible for after this program.
That's exactly right, Mr. Chairman. And as recently as this week, when I was speaking with the DES Commissioner, he suggested the possibility of doing just that, that once this water line main is in, there's the potential to apply to state revolving fund to start to branch out in some of those neighborhoods. So there's, there's more to come, but there's also, you know, more assistance potentially available, as you know, as well.
And just so you're all aware, and not, we're not just relying on staff to do this. Councillor Dunn and I went and met with the DES Director and with his staff directly to hear all of this firsthand. So, and we're also leaning on our state legislators, you know, to assist us in this process. We've also had conversations directly with the governor about this. So there's a lot, been a lot going on over the last four and a half years. This is only the beginning.
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Chair. So Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, going off your $61,000 per penny, that 137 would be about 2.2459 cents per thousand?
I got 2.17. So, close, but yes.
We like his number.
Yeah, exactly. It wasn't, it wasn't too far off. That's awesome.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
This seems to be something that would be incredibly beneficial to the town, but I can see maybe voters kind of looking at that and going, is there, what kind of education are we doing in the community to ensure that this can pass? Because I do think this is a very important project, but I just want to make sure that voters don't get to the booth and kind of balk at it.
Right. So excellent question. We had this conversation with the commissioner. And the commissioner, you know, and his team has vowed to support us in going to the community and having workshops and them coming down into the community. To be brutally candid, they sent us their presentation, and we're redoing it. Because their presentation is very good if you have a master's degree in engineering and, and if you, and if you have, you know, if you have a PhD in, in whatever water science is. So we're, we're redoing it so that we can present it to the community in a way in which they understand. I mean, it's an excellent question.
Yes.
And I think, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, the other part of that is, you know, looking at how this affects everyone on a yearly basis. So a $650,000 home. So a $650,000 home, this would be $13.65.
Right. There's a lot more to this, whether or not we wind up having our own water system, whether Londonderry owns it and runs it, whether we work with Manchester Water Works or with Penachock. There's a lot still to talk about. This is just really the, the beginning.
Yep.
But I know people have been talking about it for a long time, but government moves slowly. But we're, but we're here now.
And Mr. Chair, I may, you know, I wonder what our flexibility is on the wording of the, of the article. You know, you make the point that this is, the taxpayer is paying for $2 million out of a $25 million project, which is a great value for the town and a great, and the first step of what, of what the residents said they wanted to do on the warrant article last year. And so I'd love to get some of that wording in there that where only, this $2 million is only 8% of the project, which is being funded by the state and grant money and wherever those things are.
Yep.
Because that would make it more palatable when they read it for the first time, if, if somebody hasn't been watching the meetings and hearing the presentations.
I think that point is really well taken. And I, I think there's probably a way to build some, at least some of that in. It is possible that by the time the warrant is finalized, we won't know definitively whether we have the grant in hand. And so there may be a little bit of a delicate balance there.
Okay.
But we, I think we can certainly signal that this is a, a larger project and that there are other participants in the, in the funding scheme as well.
So in other words, if we don't get the grant, we won't be building.
That'll be that. Correct.
So, yeah.
And the other thing for the education, Mr. Chairman, is just this afternoon, I met with Lynn Wiles, the Chairman of the Utilities Committee. His group is working on a, a television program to be taped at the Cable Access Center, where the Water Subcommittee of that group will have questions for me. And so I'm looking forward to that. We're trying to time it so that it, it aligns with the budget process and the lead-up to the election.
Yeah. And just so you're aware, we have had conversations that we're going to have some public forums about this. We did think about running them ourselves, but we're actually considering bringing a professional in to run them so that we can make sure that we are doing a good job communicating to the, to the people. Okay. What am I missing? I'm missing something.
On the water?
No.
I have, I just have two more warrant articles to highlight for everybody. One is Article number seven. That is to create and fund MS4 Capital Reserve Account for Legally Required Water Quality Monitoring and Reporting Work. We have a, the, the town of Londonderry has what's called a municipal separate storm sewer system permit or a permit under that requirement. And it basically, it, it does require us to develop and maintain a comprehensive stormwater management program. That, that is a function of us discharging water from our system into what's referred to as Waters of the United States. That work, it's an unfunded mandate. And we are seeking additional funding in order to meet that legally mandated obligation so that we don't get fined frankly by the federal government. That's, that's just the cost of doing business in 2024. And I, I flagged that for everyone's attention because it's new. Article number 14 is the Lions Hall. I think that there is some room for discussion in terms of how to phrase, you know, assuming that this, something about the Lions Hall makes it to the ballot. I think there's room for discussion about how to phrase what we're doing. I took my best stab at it essentially to begin repairs and upgrades. Echoing what Counselor Butler said, this, this will get us started, but certainly there's going to be more required in the future. And we don't want to send the wrong, wrong signal there. And then lastly, two others that have come up tonight that are not written into this because I don't think that there's a, that any kind of a consensus or even discussion has occurred whether to, or at least the first one, move, move something like that to the ballot. That's pickleball. We will need to develop language for that if that is moved to the ballot. And then the two headcount adds, PD and FIRE, will need to develop appropriate language for those as well. And that's all I have on the budget tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Let me get a feel here. Do you guys want to do a warrant article for pickleball or not?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes? Yes? Everybody wants to do a warrant article for pickleball?
Yes.
We just need to decide whether or not it's going to be, you know, with or without the dome.
Six or 10. Well, six or 10.
Six or 10. And I, I agree. I just couldn't take it anymore.
And that can be, it sounds to me, and hopefully the pickleball guys are still here, I think they are, that that could be in parts, right? Like if we did, if Sig, we got six approved now, 10 could occur down the road? Or does that change things?
No.
I don't know. We can figure that out as we, as we go forward. We need to talk to the rec people, the engineering people. We'll talk, Mr. Tredear is floating around somewhere. He'll tell us whether or not something's possible or not possible. All right. Firefighters. Yes or no?
Yes.
All right. Half, two half-year, then two more next?
I want the full four. I think the full four.
Well, you're going to get the full four in a year.
I think I just, for full disclosure.
I think full four to start though.
So what was the difference between the full four and the, and the half-year?
355, 465, 422, 559.
Which number has to go on the, on the warrant article? The overtime included or not?
Overtime included. So it's either 422 or 559.
It seems like a pretty small difference, 450 to 550.
So can I ask just a question for clarification that I haven't had the chance to ask, Justin? So if we do the, if we phase in the, the full four over the, over the course of a year, does the, does the total for the four become part of default?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
I believe we would run into the issue however of, let's say we do get four very qualified individuals day one. I don't think we'd have the authority to hire them until January 1, depending on how the wording of the language goes.
That, that generally would be, that's how I remember it as well. Okay. So all four at once?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
With OT or without OT?
I would, I would suggest that we, this is just me talking. I would do it for 495K and not for the 559. That's the way I would do it, if that makes sense to everybody.
What is that, like half the OTs?
Well, because they're going to be in training for part of the year and everything, and they're not even going to be eligible for OT.
Right.
That's my thinking.
Yep.
Okay?
That makes sense.
All right. So, all right. Prosecutor. Yes or no?
Yes. We're talking about warrant articles.
One prosecutor.
Yes.
All right. Just so that you can start writing warrant articles. Because I know you're going to take some time off and want you to have something to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, God.
I just have a comment on Article 14 about the sewer storm water. Can you, is it possible just to add the amount of the fine into the warrant article as well? So that way people are aware that if we don't do this, we're going to be fined X amount of dollars.
Oh, you mean number seven?
So we have to pay something anyway.
Number seven.
That would be, that would be a question for, for Justin to talk with DRA about. DRA has some strange restrictions about what you, how much advocacy you can do.
DRA does not give us a lot of.
So they also may, they also may be concerned that it's misleading, that somebody may see that fine number and think that that's what you're going for.
Oh.
So what happens? DRA looks at it, then the Secretary of State looks at it, our lawyer looks at it, and then we get to be told what we're allowed to do.
Okay. Got it.
That's just sort of how it works.
Yeah. As well as, as the Assistant Town Manager reminded me, the, the fine changes based on what, what you failed to do. So it would be hard to, yeah.
Okay.
But it's a good suggestion. It's something to talk about when we are talking about these articles.
Are we done with the budget discussion? Because I have one last thing to say before we move to these nice people who have been waiting.
Can we talk about the library?
You want to talk about the library?
Yeah.
You didn't get enough on the library tonight?
No. That was just common. That was just common.
Of course, you can talk about whatever you want.
Okay. Would it be up for a warrant article to do the Gmail? Thank you, Gmail? Is that, is that something that we can do?
I don't think it is.
Something they have to propose.
They do.
As a warrant article. It's not, so, so the whole, here's the whole thing. It's their separate form of government. All right. You have, you, you basically have two levers. You know, give them money or don't give them money. And it's really what it comes down to. So, you know, if, if they, if they wanted to take the position of that they wanted to pull that out of their budget, even though they already signed the contract for it and put it on a warrant article, that would be their decision. So we, we can't dictate that. You know, we can have more discussions about the library and about their funding. I don't think, after listening to all the comments, I don't know if we're prepared for that tonight. But we can have, if the Budget Committee wants to have discussions about their funding or the Council wants to have discussions about it, that's something we can talk about. That make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
My only other question about the library, and I'm an advocate of the Gmail program. I think it, I think it would be a good fit, was I was curious if we got any movement on the, our questions about the merit increases.
Yes.
That would be a funding conversation. So I would suggest that if you still want those answers, I would suggest that the library director comes back here at the next meeting during the budget workshop and answers those questions.
And it's possible they haven't had a meeting of the trustees since our last.
They have a meeting Wednesday, right?
Yeah. I'm just going to say we have a meeting on Wednesday. That will be discussed at that meeting.
Okay. Cool.
So we'll be, either I or the Chair and the trustees will get back to you.
I'm not going for, you know, heavy hand, you know, don't fund the library. I'm just seeking, you know, to see if we can bring that in line with, with the other exempt employees in the town.
Yeah, absolutely. And it has to be discussed with the trustees. The Chair is aware of it, the legislature are aware of it. So it'll be, it'll be discussed at the Wednesday meeting.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Good? Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. So I have one thing to say before we, before we move off of this. All right. Tax bills are late. Department of Revenue gave us our, our tax rate number today. We are double and triple checking it because it would not be the first time that we got a tax rate and it was wrong. So we are making sure that it is right. And the tax bills will be going out forthwith, probably, hopefully by the end of the week at the absolute latest. All right? People, when you go to the ballot and you vote yes, your taxes go up. That's the way it works. Also understand the way valuations are done. So several years ago, we used to reevaluate the, the town every five years. And what would happen is, is we would have these spikes up and down in valuations. When we had these spikes up and down in valuations, the commercial property owners would file abatements every chance they got. The argument they would make in Superior Court would be is, is they would base against our up and down fluctuating rates. And every time we went with them on an abatement, we lost, which means we had to give them money. So we changed the policy and went to a two-year valuation so that we could stabilize valuations. Valuations are based on April 1st. That's right. Today it is December 4th. The valuation in, in the town was based on April 1st. I know things have changed and we're going to evaluate the town again, not this April 1st, but the following April 1st. So what you see is what will fluctuate over a two-year period and not a five-year period and protects us from losing commercial revenue on abatements because we're not keeping a balanced rate. Just so everyone understands, I know there's a lot of people who speculate on, you know, on, in social media about what we do around valuations. We are on a two-year cycle. Most towns in New Hampshire are still on a five-year cycle. We are trying to stabilize valuations and not have the ups and downs, just so everyone understands. Any questions? Okay. Next item. For the nice people who waited here for all this time, the Mammoth Road calming measures presentation. So folks, what we're going to do is, is the, the staff has gone back, looked at what we can do, what's a, you know, probably what's the fastest resolution we can get to, and we're going to present that to you now.
Can you go to the next slide, please? At our, I think it was at our, one of our recent meetings, we had citizens come and talk to us concerning the traffic flow through what we call the, the village, which is in the north end of town. So people can get acclimated to it. If you take a look at that slide and you go all the way down to the right-hand corner, that's the intersection of Route 28 or Rockingham Road and Mammoth Road. That's the beginning of the, the village. Then it moves up and we have the intersection that was discussed at Graniafield Road and Page Road. And then it goes off and it loops around and it comes back to Route 28. This area is a mix of residential and commercial, which includes the Town Senior Center, Merrill's Farm, and at one time the North, the Town North Side Fire Station. So it's a pretty interesting mix. We have, I think it's L&amp;W Drywall, which is a, is a big conglomerate drywall company that, that, that is all over the East Coast and it has a prominence in the Boston market. We have other small businesses there. And that is down in, you see where the rail trail is indicated? Those buildings are down in there and that's where L&amp;W is. And then if you go farther north and you go past the intersection of Graniafield Road and Page Road, we have another section of, of industrial or commercial business that have been there for a long time. Across from that is Merrill's Farm. So that should give you, does everyone understand what we're looking at at this point? Okay. Good. Okay. At a recent Town Council meeting, several residents voiced their concerns about the intersection of Old Mammoth Road and Page Road and Graniafield Road and the speed through the village. Additionally, they had videos of several accidents, which I requested and reviewed. One accident involved a motorcycle where the driver, where the driver was thrown into the air and skidded down the road. I don't know. It could have been 30 to 50 feet. They indicated that they have voiced their concerns several times with the Traffic Safety Committee. However, however, they have not been satisfied with the results. Now, no disrespect to the Police Department and the Chief of Police, no disrespect to the Fire Department and the Fire Chief, and no disrespect to Dave Wally. Okay? These citizens, they, they appeared, they tried to work through the Safety Committee and it didn't work and it ended up in our, in our seat. And in, with the instructions of the Chairman, he said, look, we're going to fix it now. Now, what does that mean? Okay? So you understand what the response was from those departments? There was response to those departments. The Londonderry Police Department did a speed enforcement evaluation on 12/11/2019. That's approximately four, four years ago. And the equipment they used is the JMAR, is that how you pronounce it, Chief? The JMAR reporting equipment. The report indicated, this report indicated at, at the time that the percentage of enforceable violations, in other words, violations that they could write a ticket on. It came out that it was, it was low on their evaluation. It was low. Looking at, at the report, and I have looked at it, one of the questions that I had is, I personally think that where the JMAR was positioned, which was down in the beginning, if you go to the, down to the bottoms, to the bottom right-hand corner, keep going. It was at, I think, 506, keep going, keep going, 506 Mammoth Road. Well, if you've been in town long enough and you've traveled that road, which I have, you come off 28, you're braking. Once you hit that, it, it's a curve and it goes down. The, the elevation changes. So in, in my opinion, and I'm, I used to be in law enforcement, that was ancient, a long time ago. I, I think it would have probably have been best suited, and like I said, no disrespect, in the straightaway, which would be between Fox, what do we got?
Fox Glove.
Fox Glove Street and somewhere between the intersection of Page Road. That's where the, that's where the straightaway is. Now, I can tell you. Now, I can tell you, being in, I actually have gone up to that site. I've actually sat at the intersections. I have talked to some people in town concerning their thoughts. And quite frankly, my opinion is, we do have a problem there. That was done in 2019. This town is seeing a increase in multifamily homes, condominiums, and apartments, which is density, I look at it as a density, I don't care if it's workforce housing, market rate, doesn't make any difference to me. Okay? It's density. And what we're starting to see now is we're starting to see much more traffic on these roads. Much more traffic on these roads. And I can tell you that I'm putting together a presentation about housing for the town and what I see that can happen in the future. Now, next slide. Okay, currently, this is what we currently have for stop signs in this area. All those red dots signify stop signs. The DPW, I believe, and John, you can correct me, proud of you if I'm wrong, they put the stop sign up, and if you notice on top of the stop sign, there's a red blinking light, one single red blinking light. Well, if you're going through there, I don't know how much money a blinking light costs, I really don't, but I can tell you, it's not visual at all. And the last time it was up there, it wasn't even working. It was so, I get it. There are other different types of products like this that are much more sensitive, and you're getting more bang for your buck. So, those are the current stop signs, and that is what we're seeing at the intersection. So, it's a twofold problem. Number one, is that the accidents that occur, that intersection, and speed. So, there are two issues that we have, that we've been dealing with there. Okay, next slide. Okay. The map, the map currently that you see in front of us now is somewhat of a inventory of the stop signs and the traffic signs in that area. Okay? We have on Old Mammoth Road and 28, which is down to your, I'm gonna start down by Bachmann's, so everyone understands Bachmann's Mobile Home Park, and I'm gonna work that way. We have a stop sign at Old Mammoth Road and 28. We have a 30 mile an hour sign heading in the northerly direction. We also have some signage concerning trucking. Some of it is no trucks and some of it is trucks with a limited time on it. That, to me, we have to look at that, because there are trucks that use that road. L&amp;W use the road, the drywall company, but I believe that they go out their driveway to the right and they go up into the section. I don't think they cut through the village itself. Do they? Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. We have a stop sign at Sanborn Road. We have a stop sign at Hall Road. We have caution signs at the rail trail, which I don't have there, but the yellow caution signs at the rail trail. We have a stop sign at the Waymouth Road. We've got a no-stop sign at Foxglove Street, which is at the corner of the senior center, which we should have one there, and that, to me, is an easy fix. Then we move to Buckthorn, which is a stop sign, the limited trucking, and the 30 mile an hour speed limit. Now, and like I said, once we get to those two stop signs at the intersection, they have one red blinking signal on both signs. Now, when we take a look at coming from the intersection on 28 onto Page Road, up top, all the way to, yeah? That was a signalization that was put in by the state, John, how many years ago? Do you remember?
It's gotta be over a dozen.
A dozen years ago. Okay? Then if you take the turn, now we have a speed limit sign that says 35 miles an hour. We have another sign that says, it's a caution sign, says 25 miles an hour. And then we have a sign that says there's an intersection coming up. Now, if you take a look at the opposite of that intersection, that's consistent also with that.
We participated in that and we paid half. Our half was a quarter of a million dollars on the.
On the lights. Yeah.
Our contribution was half and it was a quarter of a million.
Okay.
And that was, it might be more, it might be 15 years ago now.
Okay. So, an option that we can do? One of the, well, here are the options. The options that was discussed is, one, put a gate, put a gate at either end. Option two was traffic cushions, which I'll explain later. And option three was stop signs. Or, option four, we don't do anything at all. Those are the options. So, what you see here, those green dots, what we're doing, or what I, this is one of the proposals, is I'm very concerned about the rail trail. There were people that get on their phones and just blast, and I've seen it, I've been on the rail trail, it's like, Jesus, kids, come on back in. They just, full speed, they blow right through it. There's no caution at all on that. So, my suggestion here is, we put two stop signs there. Take out the pedestrian caution sign, put two stop signs there. We're talking about a safety issue for people that are on bikes, elderly people, and the rail trail is used. And it's used a lot. Then you move up and put a stops, these are suggestions. Put a stop sign at Foxglove. Put a stop sign at Buckthorn. And leave the blinking signs, stop signs at the intersection alone. So, there's stop signs. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't pretend to be, but I'm taking this strictly from being in town a long time, going up there, using the senior centers when community activities were there. And those are the options that we have up there. And that.
So, Granier Field Road becomes a four-way stop?
No, no. I'm gonna discuss that in a minute. All right. Now, okay. We used to have a four-way stop sign there. We used to have a four-way stop sign there. But then, when the lights came, and I may be wrong at this, but I'm pretty close to it. When the lights went on, the light intersection went on at Page Road and 28 Mammoth, there were some people that were concerned about when trucks coming from the airport in that part of town come in and they're approaching those four-way stop signs. They stop, or they're slowing down and they have, they use their brake jacks. In other words, it's like an automatic braking system, which is extremely loud. Or, for the most part, motorcycles that get to the stop and then they have to proceed, and it's been quite noisy. So, that used to be a four-way stop sign, and it was taken out. And one of the reasons was noise for the neighbors. Get it? No problem. I don't have a problem with that at all. All right. Now, the next option. Oh, yeah, thank you. The stop sign that we have there now, okay? All well, good intent. I don't know how much it costs, but quite frankly, doesn't work. It just doesn't work. I'm sure that you've seen the stops, well, it's not a stop sign, but a crosswalk up at the high school. You see that sign. That's because it's LED and it's a lot more visual. It's not just one little blinking light, that sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. So, my opinion is, that needs to change, and that's the type of stop sign that we'll put up there, which will give us a lot more visibility. I was just up in Maine, and the state is using these stop signs on state roads on all four corners, and believe me, you can see it. So, that's an option which I think we should look at. Now, the other option was, what about if we gated? Let's gate it. Okay? Can you go back to slide two? Okay. Now, if you look at slide two, if we gated it, all right? I can see it on this one. If you go up to Granier Field Road and Page Road, in order for us to gate it, in order for us to safely be able to move any traffic that goes down that road, and it'll happen. You can put all the signs in the world up there, but you'll have trucks down there, you'll have cars down there, you'll have all vehicles down there. And the question is, once they get there, if we gate it, how do they safely turn around to get out of there? Well, unfortunately, if you take a look at there, there's no place that the town could put a safe turnaround for those vehicles to exit. Once they're down there, they're either gonna have to back up, or they're going on someone's lawn, or something's gonna happen down there. Now, the same thing, if you go all the way down to Bachmann's, all the way down to the right-hand, yeah? Same thing exists there, and I've gone out and looked at it. We don't have any land to safely put any type of turnaround there for traffic if we gate it. So, in my opinion, gating isn't really an option. As much as some people like it, I think from a common sense standpoint, and believe me, guys, I've seen it. There'll be trucks going down there, people don't pay attention, and then what do we do? Then, some people will be coming back to us and saying, "Oh, wow, they turned around in my lawn, took my mailbox out," or whatever. It's just, it isn't the right thing to do. So, that I wouldn't do. The other option is put the four-way stop signs back. They were taken out, because some people complained about the noise, I get it. So, I don't see that being as a reasonable option. Now, so we've gone through the stop signs. Now, we're gonna go to what was brought up towards the speed cushions. Now, this gets pretty interesting, because there's different type, people have gone over speed bumps, and there were speed bumps, I think, up at the Apple Tree Mall. Were they removed? I think they were.
A while ago, is my understanding.
Yeah. Those were speed bumps. You know, they're very short, they're high, and you gotta stop and climb up and over them, and it's quick. Then, and there are different terminologies for these, but I'm breaking it down as easy as I can. Then you have what they call a speed hump. Now, a speed hump is something that's wide, but it goes all the way across the road. So, with that type of speed calming measure, we have issues, and I'm sure, I haven't talked to the chief of police or fire about this, and I'm sure there'll be a comment about it. But, the speed cushions allow us the flexibility to let the fire department and emergency service vehicles go in between the cushions themselves. So, they don't have to slow down, stop, and then jump up and over. If they have someone in the ambulance or something like that, it could create a problem. So, there's three different types of speed. I would recommend the speed cushion. Now, you can do it two ways, and this is, you know, these are the options. We can either go, this is a temporary one. We could purchase some temporary ones and see how they work. Instead of going and spending a ton of money on putting them in. Now, is there a challenge with plows? Absolutely. But I can tell you that in Spokane, Washington, Renton municipality, they got all the snow in the world and they've used these. Now, you know, I'm just laying this out for you. And then if we find that it works, we could put in permanent ones, and we can use those if something else comes up to try it, to see if it works. Like I said, I don't know, and I'm sure the police chief and the fire chief have their say in it, that's sure. Now, next slide. The speed cushions. This is where I think would be best suited for the speed cushions. Once again, I'm not a traffic engineer, this is coming out of common sense and watching what's going up there. We get one near the trail rail in Waymouth. They get up and over, and they keep going down to Mammoth Road, they pass Buckthorn, and then we put another one down there, they get to the light. And on the other side, and there was a gentleman that talked to me about the other side, there are no side streets on that road on the other side. So, to try to put in stop signs, we can't, you can't do it. So, you know, that's something that we have to look at. I don't know whether or not that's the case, or whether or not we put some adhesive on the sign instead. Now, on the signs, if we did go to the LED blinking lines, signs in that intersection, I think we could repurpose those beacons, those blinking beacons. And where you see the signs that says 35, 25, and the intersection way, you can, I think we could put it on one pole, take the blinking light, put it on the top, change the lens, so it's yellow. And then you have the cautionary intersection and the 25 mile an hour warning sign right there. And put one there and put one on the other side. And that pretty much wraps it up. Something needs to get done. Like I said, if we continue to go the way we do, and I will have a presentation on housing, our roads are gonna, now, are gonna become much more traveled. And we have a lot of people that come from Manchester to Derry. So, you know, when you start to look at this road, you start to look at Lynchfield, you start to look at South Road, you start to look at Gilchrist Road, they're only gonna get busier. Don't let anyone kid you, and quite frankly, I really don't care what the traffic engineers say. I've lived in this town for a long time. I've watched it go from one point to another, and it's only gonna continue. That's for another day. But, you're gonna see, it's gonna happen. So, that's my presentation, those are the options. Mr. Chairman, you said we were gonna do something? What say you?
What say you, Mr. Balasera?
Well, I think the most economical way to solve the problem is to put the stop signs in. That's what I think. And change the blinking lines that we have there now to these high-intensity, more visual signs. And take those other signs, repurpose the other sign, and make one pole with a yellow light coming the other way on Page Road. I think that's the most economical way of doing it.
Okay. So, just to recap, based on what we heard, the gate's out. That's what we're hearing is the recommendation, because we really would need a cul-de-sac to do a gate properly.
Correct.
And we can't just seize people's land to do that.
That's right.
What they're looking for from a recommendation from the council is, is that we can do, we can do a couple of things. One is, is we can, you know, take, we can ask the town manager to direct the public works director to come back with a final plan and an execution time to do it, based on the two options that are left.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
How physically tall, big are these cushioning slowdown devices?
Yeah, the community of transportation professionals and DOT, federal DOT, they have regulations for this. Those cushions are made, so you have to get up on them, you have to slow down to get up on them, to get over them.
So, like a double inches or?
And I'm sure that our engineer, town engineer will probably have.
What are they, UNH, real quick?
So, they're six to eight inches tall, with, you know, it's ramped up, so you're not gonna, you know, scrape the bottom of your car. And then I think they're a minimum of 12 feet long.
Thank you.
So, the both front and rear tires are on the.
Plateau.
Thank you. When you go to airports in the south and you come into the airport section, most of the airports in the south have them.
Unlike us in New England.
Well, because we have this white stuff that comes down.
Mr. Chairman, just to amplify a point that Councilor Butler made, we met with the school district recently, who, as you know, the business administrator is in charge of busing. And the school district is concerned, as Councilor Butler pointed out, the practicality of closing down the road at either end, lengthening bus routes, and potentially having, having kindergarteners have to walk a pretty good distance.
I think we decided the gates off the table. So, we have two recommendations. One is with these speed tables and one is without, is what it sounds like.
I actually may add a third of doing a combo of both. Would that make sense to do both? Would that make sense to do both?
I would like to hear from the police chief and the fire chief.
And from the town engineer, I think would make sense.
And the town engineer on their opinion. I mean, we're gonna do something, we're gonna do something. Is that a safe option?
So, here's the deal, we don't have to do it right now. Here's the deal. We have a meeting on December 18th. What the town council can do is, the town council can give direction to the town manager to ask the police chief, the fire chief, the town engineer, and the public works director to come back here to us with a final recommendation on December 18th on what they're recommending we do. And it's not do nothing, it's pick one and do it. Hold on, just hold, hold on.
I'm good with that.
Good?
I'm good.
You're good with that?
Yep.
You're good with that? You're good with that? Okay, now go ahead.
Can you come to the mic?
At the first end of the street, I would like to say thank you for the presentation that you have for us. With the options, the stop signs will certainly help with the accidents in the intersection that will not address the speed going down the road once people have traveled through the stop sign.
Multiple stop signs?
And that's where the speed tingles. If you put more stop signs in, maybe.
Well, we're gonna see what they're gonna come back to us with. But what we're trying to express here is that we do take this seriously. We are gonna get you an answer, which I promise we will get you an answer. You will get an answer by December 18th. Will it be perfect? I don't know. But we're gonna try real hard to make it perfect. Here's something for the residents to think about. If you really want a four-way intersection, four-way stop sign up at Granierfield Road and up there, come forth and say so. But, once we do it, you live with it.
But we don't want that.
Listen, I'm just saying.
But I'm just saying that does not address the speed issue on the road.
We understand.
Like Jim said, there's two parts. It's the speed issue on the road from 28 up to 39.
Understood.
And then it is that intersection itself.
Okay.
So, the speed issue is really concerning.
Okay, so we'll do this a little more. I need a name and address, please, from the nice lady.
Name, alley, 552 Mammoth Road.
Brian Mead, 555 Mammoth Road.
See, because poor Cameron here has to take minutes. And he has to figure out who you were.
Mr. Chair, can I make a quick comment?
Yeah, of course. The noise, the problem with noise with the four-way stop, I think you should anticipate that you're gonna get a similar level of noise with the speed humps or whatever those are called.
Well, that's, you know, we're damned if we do them, damned if we don't.
I think the one thing you have to realize is there's no real true truck traffic through there.
All right, so, sir, hold for just one second.
Not to say that trucks don't go through there, don't get me wrong, but you don't have these big dump trucks there. They shouldn't be going through there. That's an enforcement issue. And we can change those signs. But it's pretty hard when you have a couple of businesses on that road that have big trucks. Maybe we say, "Look, you're coming out that driveway? You can only go right. You can't go left through the village." You know, so they're the things we can.
Now, Chief, do you wanna be heard?
Chief, you wanna be heard?
Sorry.
I'm out.
I just needed to clean some things up here before you came up, Chief.
So, I know it's getting late, and my instructions are to come back on the 18th, so I will not share my solution. What I will say is, I don't take offense to what you said.
Thank you.
I just wanna clarify a couple of quick things. So, people in this town sitting behind me don't think we haven't done anything since 2019. 2019, I was in operations at that time. This matter was brought to my attention. The JMR is a device that we use, one of several. The JMR is one where we have a tube on the ground, and it collects data. We've all gone over those things everywhere in our communities and state roads and says, "What are those things?" Well, they collect data. They tell us how fast and type of vehicles. We have done that. We have used what we call our SAM unit, which is the one that you guys all see, and people make comments on Facebook to see how far they can go until it flashes and tells them how quick they are speeding. Great device, it works well. Can't use it all year round. We put that thing out all the time, as you guys know. We have over 500 roads in town, I believe. Whenever a resident is concerned and they want it, we try to accommodate and put that where we can have an officer. We have done that up there, too. We've done directed patrols. For those of you who don't know, is we put out hate emails to the command, from command staff, Town and Patrol Division. You gotta go to this road, and you want it done from this time to this time, for this amount of days, for this many weeks, whatever it is. We have done that. We did it back in July this year. We did it in April this year. We did it in November of this year. We did it many. We hear you loud and clear, and we are out there.
And I can, just to pipe in, I've been watching the police reports. Every day I go through them. And if anyone knows the police reports, if you see at the top, it says "traffic control", that means they're doing radar, or they're sitting there. And I can tell you, the last, since we've had this conversation, Chief, your guys have been up there, they've been unbelievable.
Thank you.
Yeah, I only got pulled over three times.
I got pulled, well, I was talking to a resident, and they stopped. And said, "Who the hell are you?"
I just helped. And it's important that when the people standing behind me are the ones that call me, the ones that email me, the ones that complain to you folks or to the town manager, we hear you loud and clear. We don't ignore you. Now, I will say this. If everyone wants to be transparent, most of the people in this room go to work every day. You're not watching your street 24/7. You're gone for most of the time to work. While you are gone to work, and you may not know, all these shifts spend time out on your street. While at times, people may think that we don't stop enough cars or we don't do enough, I will tell you that the data that we had collected for every single time we do a traffic enforcement, we do have one word, and it's called discretion. The officers are allowed to either give a warning or give a ticket. We try to educate our officers to do what's in the best interest of our community members, our taxpayers, citizens, whatever you wanna call us. They try to do what's right for the motorists, too. If someone is driving with a clean record, and they go through, I'll just say, this road at 45 into 30, when I was a young patrolman, I would've probably issued a ticket all day long. Because it's 15 over, and that's my house, or that's my street. I wouldn't want it done to me. When we look at this here, that's a 30, that the police department hadn't asked a couple years ago to ask the town to put on the warrant article to reduce this speed to Town Line 30. I thought it was brilliant. It's brilliant because we've all been ingrained, as I've said this in the Traffic Safety Committee for the last three or four years. Since we were all kids, everyone always knows, if you do 10 over, you're not gonna get stopped. I didn't create that. We were all told that as kids. This isn't a police thing. What is known through society is if you do 10, 12, 15 over, you're probably gonna get a ticket. It's unreasonable. You do five or 10 over in a school zone, you're getting a ticket. I hear these residents loud and clear. I will give you my professional opinion about stop signs, ramps, tables, cushions, fourways. I'll tell you what I think. I hear you loud and clear. I look forward to any recommendation from the town manager, from the town council, from DPW, and the citizens. But, I just wanted to clarify that we have that out there. We do hit it hard, and I don't believe, of the tickets that we have issued, I do not believe any resident sitting here today got one. So, I guess that's a win.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Folks, just for clarification purposes, when we issue a summons or a ticket, as the police chief has called it, the money does not come to the town. It goes to the state. We get zero, just so we understand that. All right, so I'm gonna wrap things up pretty quickly here. There's a couple of people who wanna talk. Please, you gotta come up, you gotta give me your name and address.
Mr. TM.
My name's Robin Stewart. I live at 522 Mammoth.
Yes.
So, I appreciate all this work, because this is more than we've had in the 11 years I've been talking about this, and...
Sorry about that.
That I talk that much. My husband is, too. But, I just want you to think about putting those speed bumps. To me, is just giving them another way to fly off as fast as they can. I know it's hard to believe if you don't live up there, and I have, I live right on the hill, right by the rail trail. I have a nice porch with windows from the ceiling to the floor. Anybody who wants to come up and sit for an afternoon or an evening, feel free, because you won't believe what you'll say. And the near accidents that happen by the rail trail are just incredible. I mean, it makes me crazy sitting on the porch in the summertime. And now, even now, people go out at nighttime on their bikes with lights and everything down the rail trail, and people don't stop. But I came out of my driveway the other day. There was somebody coming around the curve, coming southeast, yeah? And I was coming here, I didn't see anybody coming. I stopped, I look several times, I always do. I came out, started to pull out. This person came and slammed on their horn, which of course scared me, because I didn't even see them. They came around that curve so fast, and I ended up in the field across the street by the open field, by where the media box, media building is, where they keep all the wood from the company. It's just not so easy as these little fixes. It has to be something that, I just think that we need to think about the fact that that will just give people little lunch areas to go off of.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll try to figure it out.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else, sir, did you have anything?
I was willing to speak to the comment of the noise.
Okay, well, thank you.
Well, I guess I'll say it, Brian Goran.
May you just, do you mind just coming up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Brian Goran, 542 Mammoth Road. So, yeah, just seeing the amount of speed that comes through right here. Very invested in my sleeping daughter right now, playing out in our yard. It's scary. It's very scary, the stuff we see right now. So, it is, it's scary. I'll take the noise all day, every day, over my daughter getting hit, or one of the other kids, residents, young or old. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure, you can stay there.
Sorry. This meeting has just been so exciting for her. She's just zonked out now.
Trust me, there's times.
I was actually just curious if we've ever, I realize it's probably hard to enforce, but if we've ever considered a no-through traffic sign? I know with the trucks, we do, but would that be an option, maybe to add to some of the other suggestions that have been talked about?
Everything's an option, everything's on the table. The problem with all signage is, it all has to be enforced.
Yeah, right.
I mean, so what I'm hoping is, is that they're gonna, the staff is gonna look at these two options, and they're gonna come back here with what they think is the, you know, the most effective resolution. And we're gonna try it. And frankly, we might get it wrong. And if we get it wrong, we're gonna try something else. We're just not gonna let it go. But the one thing I will tell everyone who is in this room who lives there, you can call 911, it will go to the state, and it'll transfer to us, and the police will come. If you call 603-432-1111, it will come right into dispatch. It will not go through the state. And if you see someone who's doing something that is dangerous, call, and we will come. You have to call. You have to help us. And if people know that we're gonna keep showing up all the time, at some point, they're gonna stop, or they're going to avoid that area. I mean, that's what we've learned over the years, that when, you know, when you put the pressure on, they'll go someplace else, and then we'll deal with them there. But please, as proactive as we are being, we need you to be equally as proactive. Do not be afraid to call the police department. They are here to help. Does that help?
Yeah, could I also speak to that? It's unrelated to this particular, but it's to credit our police department, if you don't mind.
Of course.
I'm actually a psychiatric nurse. I work for the state of New Hampshire Hospital in Concord, and some of you might have heard what happened a couple of Fridays ago. And I do, I can definitely speak to the responsiveness of our Lennerdery Police Department. I reached out to them for some support for my daughter. She unfortunately heard about a lot of what happened. And it's her mommy's work, and it's been very difficult. And the Lennerdery Police Department has been incredibly supportive as well as the Moose Town School District, teachers and counselors and things like that. Lieutenant Malloy was kind enough to have us over last week, and we were able to tour the police department. So, anyway, totally unrelated, but I did wanna take this opportunity to thank our towns.
No, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Folks, we have great people, we have great services. We have a great police department, a great fire department, a great public works department. Our staff at Town Hall cares. The 200 and some odd employees who work on the town side of government here care. Tell us what you think. We'll see what we can do. We can't always answer your question. We're never gonna be perfect, but we're gonna try. Anything else? With that, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, and you are free to stay or free to go. We should be able to wrap things up in the next five or 10 minutes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next item is, I'm gonna jump to appointments and reappointments, the health officer and the deputy health officer. And we have, I'll take a motion to reappoint Fred Heinrich as the health officer and Nick Cottner as the deputy health officer.
So, moves?
Second. All those in favor, sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. And they are reappointed. I'll take a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from November 20th.
I just have an amendment real quick on those minutes, Mr. Chair. On line 250, it says, "Vice Chairman Franz moved to approve this request." Being that I was recused, being that I was refused for this veteran tax credit discussion, I did not motion. So, if we could have those minutes reflect that change, and also that I re-entered into the conversation at around line number 254, please.
So, please amend the amendments accordingly. I'm looking for a motion to approve as amended. Councilor Butler will be abstaining, since he's not here.
So, moves?
Second. All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, minutes are approved. I have, I need approval of the unsealed, non-public minutes. I'll accept a motion to approve the unsealed, non-public minutes.
So, moves?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative, those minutes are approved. Anything on liaison reports?
Mr. Chair, real quick, going back to a small budget item. I know we're looking, are we still going after the DPW department to put together pricing, or Mr. Holy to put together pricing for the sign that was suggested that we install?
I don't know where we stand on the sign.
Actually, the town clerk had been involved in that effort a number of years ago, researching that. I asked her to reach out to the vendor just to get an idea, and my understanding is that's in process.
Okay, so I guess we'll see that on the 18th. Okay, so I guess we'll see that on the 18th. Wonderful.
So, real quick, Mr. Chair, if I may, school board liaison purchasing policy update. The school board has adopted a new purchasing policy. This policy was finalized after the fourth reading. A significant change is in the reduction of the spending limit requiring school board approval. Previously expenditures over 100K required SB approval. This limit has now been lowered to 15K. Bidding policy and revision alongside with the purchasing policy, bidding policy has also been updated for expenditures exceeding $15,000. It is now mandatory to obtain at least three written quotes and seek SB approval. For amounts between 5,000 and 15,000, three written quotes are required with the approval process being handled through the business office. Legal representation. The school board has hired Upton and Hatfield for exclusive legal representation.